Great, thank you. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Welcome everyone to this regular meeting on Monday evening, June 21st. Will you please first join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Madam Clerk, can you please call roll?
With pleasure, Mayor. Councilmember Gorthos?
Here.
Councilmember Papin?
Here.
Councilmember Lee?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Bonilla?
Here.
And Mayor Rodriguez?
Here. Okay. Due to the health orders in place at this time, we are holding meetings remotely. Information on how to provide public comment is explained at the bottom of each published agenda. When public comment is announced for the item you wish to comment on, please, when signed in to Zoom, use the raise your hand feature and you will be called upon at the appropriate time. If you're using the phone-in feature, please use star nine to raise your hand and when called upon, press star six. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for that specific item. Okay, so now we're going to move to the first item on the agenda, which is a ceremonial item. And we're very pleased to have a good friend of San Mateo, Shara Angeles, President of the San Mateo Area Chamber of Commerce with us. It's all yours, Cheryl. And she's going to give us a, I think she's going to give us a year in review. So.
Thank you so much, Mayor Rodriguez and esteemed City Council members. I'm thrilled that you asked me to join you tonight. We do have a lot to share. We're especially proud that, you know, we survived through this year and a half pandemic and still here for our community and businesses. And so we were, first I want to say that the city of San Mateo has been a fabulous partner. I can't thank them enough. I want to personally say thank you to our City Manager, Drew Corbett, Assistant City Manager Kathy Kleimbahn, and our Economic Development Manager, Jennifer Chen, who's assisted me this past year and we've really done a lot together. So thank you all very much. We were delighted when Mayor Rodriguez and our new Senator Josh Becker agreed to attend our annual board retreat a couple of months ago. And we wanted to know what they thought that the chamber could do better and, you know, some ideas that they may have, how we could assist our city, our businesses and our community. So with that, we formed a committee and came up with a new mission statement, which I will read. "The mission of the San Mateo Area Chamber of Commerce is to promote a vibrant local economy through active leadership, advocacy, and engagement of the entrepreneurs, businesses, and community members we serve." Our key accomplishments this past year, you know, we really were very busy, but there are a few that stand out. We held 60 informational briefings and seminars on topics that affect our businesses. I think some of the more notable topics were working with the SBDC to help people understand the PPP loans and the idle loans and help them work through that process and application. We provided our most hard-hit businesses, I think the restaurant industry, and held special seminars for them with Rakuten, a local business, and also Chow Now. We also partnered with the Virus Geeks and provided 20,000-plus free COVID tests. And we also successfully advocated for business relief policies through the California Chamber, the US Chamber, our city. And we wrote letters and, you know, supported our businesses and some relief for our businesses. And then we completed a COVID impact survey of 100-plus local businesses. And the feedback that we got was very helpful. You know, they suggested that they wanted to be more involved in community. And, you know, definitely, they had been harmed by the COVID pandemic this past year. So in order to serve our businesses and community better, we decided to open a Business Assistance Center. This service is a free service. Anybody can make an appointment with us for one-on-one mentoring with professional people that are volunteering their time in some of the areas that might be most interesting, or business planning, marketing programs, helping to find employees, which I know is a very big concern at this time, and how to obtain financial assistance. So you can find out more about that by checking out our website or calling the office and we'd be happy to set up an appointment. We're also working with some nonprofit partners, the SBDC, SCORE, the College of San Mateo, and Nova Works. So we're very excited about that. They're all excellent local nonprofits, which we will all be joining together to help our local businesses and get our economy going again. Last but not least, we hired Erica Wood, who is as our new Executive Director of our Leadership Program. And I'm going to now turn it over to her. I also wanted to mention that Pauline Chung, who works in our office, was promoted to the Director of our Business Assistance Center as well. So congratulations, Pauline and Erica. You can take it away now.
Thanks so much, Cheryl. And good evening, Mayor Rodriguez and Councilmembers. I'm delighted to be with all of you this evening and to give you a quick preview of what's next for the Leadership Program. I think as many of you know, this has really been a flagship program of the chamber for the last 30 years. And that's been made possible with the help of many partners, including the city of San Mateo. I was brought on to reimagine the Leadership Program at a time when the chamber was redefining its purpose and mission as an organization and also at a time when I think all of us were grappling with the question of what it would take to address the systemic challenges that the COVID pandemic has laid bare, as well as the deep and pervasive health, economic, and racial inequities that have existed in our communities for a very long time. All of this made very clear that leaders needed different skills and capacities to drive social and economic progress in the post-COVID era. With that challenge and through the Chamber's Leadership Program, we have this tremendous opportunity to create better and stronger communities by activating leaders to address the most challenging issues that we face. And in the process, we really believe that we can lift people up who have been hardest hit by these challenges and lead a more inclusive recovery. So as has been true in the past, the program will continue with three core elements, including community issues, leadership development, and peer support. But what's going to be different is that our class days are really going to be guided and defined by the community issues that are pressing and that all of us are thinking about. And those issues will really be brought to life with compelling content and dynamic speakers. Some of the topics that we're thinking about include topics like the future of work, home not found, climate change, and racial injustice, just to name a few. Each class day will culminate with at least three opportunities for impact and what class members can do to effectuate positive change. These opportunities could take the form of advocacy around policy changes that are needed, volunteering time, or serving on a board or holding public office. The leadership development piece will really be focused on the skills and capacities that matter most to help leaders deal with increasing levels of uncertainty while also working toward recovery and our longer-term resilience. The leadership development will be done through both group training and I'm really excited to share that we will also be able to provide executive coaches that will provide one-on-one coaching sessions to all of our class members. One of the hallmarks of the program has been the diverse cohort of class participants that we recruit each year from the government, nonprofit, and public sectors. That will continue. And when the cohort comes together, it's amazing the peer connections and relationships that are formed and that endure beyond the program. So we want to strengthen the peer connection and support through a buddy system and peer advisory groups. And then finally, we're thinking about a community impact challenge where class participants will have the opportunity to really take on an intractable problem in real time and borrowing from our colleagues in the corporate sector and some of the methodologies that they've pioneered, like design sprints. We'll use those to help come up with solutions to these challenges. So we're excited. I hope you're excited. In closing, I will just say we are accepting applications. For more information, people can contact me at eric@sanmateochamber.org or by phone, 650-401-2443. Thanks so much for your time and we're happy to take any questions.
Well, thank you both for that presentation. You know, you talked, Cheryl, about the strong partnership we've had with the city and the chamber this past year. And I think that it's even more important these coming years as our businesses recover and eventually thrive again. And we really appreciate this partnership and we commit as a city to working very closely with you. And I also just wanted to do, give a little shout out for the Leadership Program. Deputy Mayor Bonilla and I were proud graduates of almost five years ago now. I don't know if other council members also did that program, but I think we both would highly recommend it and we encourage you to apply and be a part of that program. Thank you both for being here. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. We're going to move on now to the Consent Calendar. Madam Clerk, can you please read the items on the Consent Calendar?
With pleasure, Mayor. "All matters listed under the Consent Calendar are considered by the Council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion. If discussion is desired, that item may be removed and considered separately." Item number two, Ordinance Adoption: Claims for Tax Refunds, Chapter Amendments, Including Electronic Claims Filing. Item number three, Ordinance Adoption: Short-Term Rentals Amendment. Item number four, Ordinance Adoption: Wireless Telecommunication Facilities in the Public Right-of-Way. Item number five, Regional Active Transportation Program Grant Application: Resolution of Local Support. Item number six, Rail Shuttle-Bus Service Administration Agreement: Amendments. Item number seven, Traffic Analysis Services: Memorandum of Understanding Amendment. Item number eight, Wastewater Treatment Plant Nutrient Removal and Wet Weather Management Upgrade and Expansion Project Agreement. Item number nine, Wastewater Treatment Plant Supply of Liquid Emulsion Polymer Contract. Item number 10, Collection System Construction Management Services for the Clean Water Program Agreements. Item number 11, South Bayside Management Authority Joint Exercise of Powers Agreement: Amendment. Item number 12, Recology San Mateo County Franchise Agreement: Amendment. Item number 13, Permanent Local Housing Allocation Housing Assistance Program: Agreement and Appropriation. Item number 14, General Plan 2040: Consultant Services and Outreach Status Update Agreement and Amendment: Funds Appropriation. Item number 15, Worker Resource Center Operations Agreement. Item number 16, Fiscal Year 2021/22: General Liability and Property Insurance. Item number 17, Compensation and Classification Updates for the Police Department. Item number 18, Life, Accidental Death and Dismemberment and Long-Term Disability Insurance Agreement Extension. Item number 19, the COVID-19 update is being removed by staff and being put at the end of the meeting. And item number 20, Planning Commission Appointment Subcommittee Recommendation.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there any member of the council who would like to pull an item from the Consent Calendar? Okay. Is there any member of the public who would wish to comment on any item on the Consent Calendar? Now would be the time to raise your hand and this is for Consent Calendar items only. And I see one hand up, but I think that hand has been up for a while, so. Oh, it's down, okay. All right, I will entertain a motion.
I move approval of the Consent Calendar.
A second.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Can you please call roll?
Councilmember Gorthos?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bonilla?
Yes.
Councilmember Papin?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is public comment. And members of the public wishing to comment on any item not appearing on the agenda may address the City Council at this time. State law prohibits council from taking action on any matter not on the agenda. Your comments may be referred to staff for follow-up. Public comment is limited to a total of 15 minutes. However, an opportunity for additional public comment may be provided later in the agenda. So if you'd like to speak in general public comment, please raise your hand now.
Mr. Mayor, I have two hands up. The first person I'm going to call on is Mark Hewlett.
Hello.
Oh, we can hear you.
Need to see me. But my name is Mark Hewlett. I've been a city employee for slightly over six years. The majority of my time has been with the maintenance unit. And the reason for my comments tonight are regarding the negotiations between the city and the maintenance unit on a new contract. We are currently working under an expired contract. My ask of all of you tonight is to reconsider the stance the city's bargaining team has taken with SEIU 521 members. The city's team has repeatedly stated that they will not consider, nor are they authorized, to negotiate any kind of salary adjustments for at least two years. Now, we all know the impact that COVID has had on the city. My question is, does the city know the impact that COVID has had on their employees? The maintenance unit has been outside taking care of city assets, almost literally, since day one. City parks, streets, traffic signals, sewers, and the golf course could not be maintained virtually. We came to work every day knowing the risk of exposure from leaving the comfort of our houses. Some of our people got sick. Now, I understand the notion of taking one for the team to help the city get healthy financially, but what I don't understand is one or more other work groups in the city will be getting salary adjustments over the next three to four years, while the maintenance unit has been offered zero for at least two. Now, the folks getting salary adjustments over the next three to four years are some of the highest-paid people in the city and the majority of them have been working virtually since this started. And I had a thought today. Everybody knows how the cost of everything is going up these days. But I had a thought today. I wonder how much money employees who have been Zooming from home for over the last year have saved on gasoline. Meanwhile, the maintenance unit has been filling their tanks week after week, month after month, to show up and get the job done. All we're asking for is a pencil or two, a pencil or two to be sharpened and find a way to help us stay full with rising inflation and recognize the efforts of this work group. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Chris Conway.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Does the City Council plan on addressing the letter from Attorney Scott Rafferty regarding district?
Yes, we do, Mr. Conway. That's going to be an item coming up later on this evening. So if you'd like to comment on that item, now is not the right time to do that, but it will probably be coming up, I would say, in about an hour and a half, maybe two hours, plus or minus.
Okay, next speaker is Nick Embadi.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hello. My name is Nick Embadi. I'm a traffic safety worker in charge of the paint and sign shop for the city of San Mateo. I've worked here for five years. COVID-19 has tremendously raised our workload due to the demand for service. What will the city do with increased demand from the residents? We can't wish this demand for services away, nor can we ignore it. We are fighting for city services.
Hey.
I'm sorry, Mr. Cohen, can you please mute your mic? Sorry about that, Esther.
No.
I'm so sorry.
We are fighting for city services and our livelihoods as a community. We need you to demonstrate care for residents, our workers, by negotiating a fair contract, which prioritizes quality public services. We have been maintaining safe streets, which gave added space for the community to get out and have some sense of normal. We also work double shifts, early mornings, installing parklets to give back to local small businesses. And we still maintain all these things today. This has all been added to our regular workload, which we were already doing. I also would like to touch on all the cleanup work we do behind contractors hired by the city. A lot of these projects go over budget and have requirements needed that are not fulfilled. We complete these projects because we care for this community and have a commitment to the highest standard for the community. Without some type of compensation, we will continue to lose coworkers to other cities and better opportunities for them and their families. Also, with the rise in the cost of everything, it is going to not be able for our coworkers to live in this city, nor close to this city, which also puts a strain on emergency services that we could provide for our residents. Please take this into consideration and I thank you for all your time and listening to me. Thank you.
Okay, next speaker is Kenny Tanaka.
Hi there. Can you guys hear me all right?
Yes, we can.
Excellent. My name is Kenny Tanaka. I'm a maintenance worker too with the Public Works. I work in the traffic section specifically with the traffic signals and streetlights. And I've been an employee for about two years. I maintain about 6,000 streetlights, over 6,000 streetlights. And we're coming up on about 90 signalized intersections. And currently, it's just me. There is another guy, he's currently out handling some family business. But all of these things, I'm having to deal with myself. And it's a little bit stressful, to be honest. But, you know, I take pride in my work and I try to make everything perfect. I want the city to run smoothly. I want residents to be safe. And I want to do a good job. I recently had to move out of San Mateo. I used to live right behind the courtyard in the moderate-income housing complex there. But even that has become unaffordable for me based on my salary. So I've had to move away from the city. So it takes me now an additional 30 minutes to get to work, plus gas. And it was really convenient being so close to work. I was able to respond to callouts as part of my duties for working on intersections and streetlights. I respond to callouts and emergency situations. So being so close, it was easy for me to respond to those callouts in a timely manner. Now, it's 30 minutes before I can even get to the city to begin responding to callouts. So, you know, again, I love working for the city. I love doing what I do and I love doing a good job. But I would like you guys to consider even a modest increase in our salary so that we might be able to live closer and also be able to do our jobs better, be able to respond quicker and keep the people of the city that much safer. You know, during the pandemic, as I've said, I've been on call, so I didn't get any time off. You know, I've had to respond to things during the time that we were supposed to be at home. And that's, I have two small kids. I have a six-year-old and an 11-year-old. And even now, they are not eligible for a vaccine, even though I'm fully vaccinated and my wife is and my colleagues as well, many of them. That concern still lies in my head. You know, I don't want to bring anything home to my family. Working in the public, that concern is always in the back of my mind.
Esther Tanaka, your time is up. If you can try to wrap things up.
Yes. You know, that's just a concern of mine. And, you know, like I said, I enjoy being with the city and I enjoy doing the work that I do and I want to continue doing a good job. But, you know, if there's another opportunity that serves better, you know, I'm afraid I might have to consider that. So I thank you for your time and your consideration. And I hope you consider the proposals that other people have talked about. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, our next speaker is Derek.
Hello. My name is Derek Fahumundis. I've been working as a facilities maintenance worker for the city for the past five years. And basically here today to urge you to reconsider your position on our 0% increases over the next two years. As you know, everything has gone up in this pandemic and things continue to rise. Groceries are 21% higher than they were. Gas is 25% higher. Building materials have more than doubled. And we just want you guys to, you know, consider giving us a fair cost of living. I mean, there's a difference between a cost of living and a raise. And what we're asking for is a cost of living increase, which would be fair to keep in this town that it's very expensive to live here. I'm sure you all know because you all live here. And, you know, we all know you have a seat at the table and a part in making the important decisions. We ask that you take into consideration and think about what we are sharing with you this evening. We're not participating in this meeting with malintent or selfish requests, but we would like to have our voice be heard and a chance at a fair contract. Thank you very much for your time.
Mr. Mayor, we are at 15 minutes and we have five more speakers. The next speaker is M. Coop.
Hi, my name is Mark Cooper and I've been working as a park maintenance worker for the city of San Mateo for 11 years and I'm an SEI member. I'm here to urge the city to hear and take action in regards to contract negotiations between the city and the maintenance unit. During the pandemic, while most people were at home safe, we were putting our lives on the line and our workload had increased. We also altered our schedules, so staff were present seven days a week. We sanitized restrooms and playgrounds. We kept summer camps running. Our parks and our golf courses were safe havens and a refuge for the public. We feel our service is unappreciated and we have been negotiating for six months and the city continues to offer us a zero COLA and has denied hazard pay, even though the city is to receive $18 million in federal aid as part of the American Rescue Plan. We need reciprocation from the city. Our unit has been given, has given all to the city. It's time the city shows its appreciation by coming to the table and bargaining in good faith. A zero COLA is unacceptable. A lot of our members are barely holding on. Some of our members actually have to work two jobs. And a zero COLA is kind of a slap in the face. And we really need the city to bargain in good faith. We need them to come to the table and start movement. And so we're asking you to change your position. During this time in the parks, it was unbelievable to see how many people came to the parks. You know, they weren't at the malls because the malls were closed. You know, they weren't at the restaurants because the restaurants were closed, but they were in the parks. And we made sure that it was safe and anything that the city asked of us, we got done immediately. But that includes signage to protect the, the, the public. And as I said, sanitizing restrooms and playgrounds and getting things ready for children to play. You know, children were stuck inside until they could go to the parks. And what we're asking is for the city to come to the table and to bargain in good faith. Being stuck at zero for six months is unacceptable. The city is not in the red, it's in the black. So I really appreciate your time, and I would hope that you will come together and maybe change your position and, and I really appreciate your time. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, if you can just pause for a second. Well, okay, we've gone well over the 15 minutes, um, that we allocated initially. We have a packed agenda. Um, if we, we've gotten through everybody who originally had their hands up. Um, if it's a council's pleasure, we can move the rest of this public comment till the end of the meeting. Um, or we can go through, uh, S. If, if I would have known how many hands were up, I would have probably limited the, the, the time to about two minutes instead of the three. So does anybody have a problem with moving it? Yes, Councilmember Pepin.
If there are still a couple more to speak on the item that's already been spoken on, do you think, Mr. Mayor, we could hear those? And if there's other items, then we would continue public comment? Is that okay? I just, for continuity, I'd like to hear the rest of it on this particular topic.
I would think we probably either want to go through the rest or not pick and choose what they're going to be talking about. Um, so should we just let it keep going?
Yes.
Could we ask them to shorten it if, if they don't mind so we can get going with the meeting?
Yes. Okay, so. Yeah, you have, you have three minutes. You don't have to use the three minutes. Okay, Madam Clerk, we can continue.
Yes, the next speaker is Chris Conway. Um, and he came in earlier, and I think I accidentally, uh, disallowed his talking, so I apologize for that. Mr. Conway.
I already, uh, asked a question.
Okay, you're gonna do another item. Okay.
Okay, then the next speaker is Jordan Grimes.
Good evening, Council. Uh, Jordan Grimes, 19th Avenue Park. Um, wasn't planning on speaking, but just wanted to quickly chime in and, um, you know, just strongly support the city workers, um, who called in earlier and their request for increased compensation and additional support. Um, they've really done everything and, and continue to do, um, an incredible job for us, especially over this past year. And we should be doing everything we can to provide them with better pay and working conditions. I'm, I'm frankly pretty shocked and dismayed that we're not offering them a cost of living increase. Um, I, I, this is the first that I've heard of anything like this. I'm sure other residents would be, would be similarly dismayed. Um, so I really hope, uh, we can, we can work on getting them some increased pay here. Uh, and then just very quickly, I wanted to highlight Kenny Tanaka's comments specifically. Um, when we talk about the housing crisis and community character, I, that comment really, I can't think of a better example of, of what we're talking about, um, when we talk about the impacts of the housing crisis on our community. Um, we have so many incredible, uh, people and employees living in this city who love this city, um, and, and are being, are being pushed out. So, um, I just wanted to highlight that and really do hope the council will give, um, you know, reconsideration to their requests. Thanks.
Next speaker is John Chakuti.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. I'll try and keep this short. Uh, good evening, council members. My name is John Chakuti. I'm a maintenance worker, and I've worked for the city for 26 years now. And I've seen a lot of changes in those ti, in that time. And, uh, when I was hired, we had comparable wages to the other cities. And, uh, when I tested, we'd have 500, 800 people testing for these jobs. Now, unfortunately, we're only lucky to get maybe 20 people. So we were here through the tough times, starting in '08, where we had furlough days, we gave up raises. In streets and traffic, we went for 13 years without hiring. It was quite the burden, but, uh, we pushed through. And now, we hire, we have people that train, and we invest a lot of time and money into. And a lot of these new hires move on to different cities that pay more. Financially, when you invest in someone or something, you want to see that investment grow and not disappear. Just two months ago, we lost another employee to another city. So we're here just for, we just are asking for an equitable and fair COLA, and not to go backwards again. I'd like to say thank you to the residents for all their support. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Next speaker is Drew.
Good evening, again. I, like, uh, Jordan Grimes said a little bit earlier, I wasn't planning to speak, but I'm hearing the, the other speakers, and I just, um, I think about all the interactions I've had with the Public Works Department at the courtyard over the number of years I've lived in San Mateo, and they've just been great to, to talk to and work with. I've submitted maintenance requests, and they get worked. Things get, get done, um, and they seem knowledgeable about what priorities, like certain things are more important than others, but they all got to get worked. And I, I've said before in previous meetings, I consider the courtyard a strategic asset, and that's not just the physical location, it's the people as well, the cost to train. We talk about police and firefighters and how important they are. I think the people in the courtyard, the staff, city staff is, is also very important. It's a, it's a different kind, but when you think about, when I think about the courtyard people, the staff that work there and stuff, I think about, you know, tonight, we could have an earthquake, and then suddenly, we're gonna call on them to come from their homes and help, help do stuff, clean up stuff, do different things. We're gonna have wildfire-type stuff. That's a different thing. When we have storms in the winter, that's a different kind of context. I, I remember some storms, I'm driving in my car, and I see the workers out there, um, all, you know, just trying to work away and do stuff. And so I just think, like, part of this is, you know, there's a cost to the churn. There's a cost to having openings. I had a, something I submitted to the, to a different department, and eventually it would get maybe to the courtyard to implement. And they said, hey, they've lost some workers, it may take longer for things to get done. And it's like, there's a cost to the training, a cost of the turnover. And, and when I interact with staff at this point, they know the city, they'll be like, oh, I know where that part is, or let me look at the map, and they know things. And if you get a new person who doesn't know it, I'm not opposed to new people. I mean, we got all start, start somewhere, but there's just a cohort of tech, of knowledge here that I feel like is important, and we don't want to just necessarily kind of inadvertently, flippantly lose it because of, we're trying to watch some priorities. I consider this, these staff people, um, are very valuable to this city. And so I, I think I would like to just, you know, things we can do to say thanks after a year and a half of what's happened and stuff. Thank you.
And our last speaker is Rayon Moshe Motashami. Sorry, Rayon.
Thank you very much. Um, I just wanted to echo the previous comments. I also wasn't planning on, um, speaking as well, but was very moved by, um, the maintenance workers who, um, spoke up today. And I, um, agree with the supporting them, um, with wage increases and also with, um, yeah, with, with just this idea of showing them that it's, that they, they should have a cost of living, um, increase. And I, I thought that it was especially moving, um, with the fact that, um, Mr. Tanaka's story of having to move away. And, um, I just want to emphasize Mr. Grimes's comment about how with our housing crises that we face, cost of, um, that cost of living increases might not solely be enough, but are a good start, and we need to really focus on tackling our housing supply issues in, in our city. So, um, that, this was, th, these were very moving comments from me. Thank you.
We have no other speakers.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'd like to close public comment. And we're gonna move on to the first item on our agenda, which is a public hearing, item number 25, uh, fiscal year 2021 operating and capital budgets. And again, appropriations limit adoption and fiscal for, and fiscal years 2021 to 2026 capital improvement program approval. And we have our Finance Director Rich Lee with us to present. All yours, Rich.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Rich Lee, Finance Director. Uh, the item before you this evening is the proposed 2021-22 operating budget and 2021-26 capital improvement program. Uh, let me get started here. Give me one second. I'm actually back in council chambers, so I need to just get myself acclimated. So by way of background, uh, this is the third time that the council has been, uh, seen the budget. Uh, we presented a budget preview to the council April 19th. We had the first budget hearing on June 7th, and this is the second budget hearing, uh, which will ask for the council to adopt the budget. Uh, at a large level, the total appropriations, including the operating and CIP, is $253.6 million. The lion's share of that is for the operating budget at nearly 80%, that's $201 million. Uh, for the funding sources, that's $248 million. Uh, the large majority of that comes from taxes and charges. That's 75% of our funding sources. Uh, looking at the operating budget, um, 60% of that, uh, goes to, uh, public safety and public works. Uh, so a large majority, uh, going towards our, uh, departments that provide direct services to our residents and community. Uh, looking at the operating budget a different way by expenditure type, uh, the majority does go to services. So that really goes towards personnel costs when you combine, uh, what we pay to SMC Fire, salaries and wages and benefits, and that's 65% of our total operating budget. Looking at the operating budget by fund, as you can see, the majority, uh, that's 69% of our operating budget is in the general fund. Uh, another, um, 10% or 20% uh, going to the sewer enterprise fund. So 90% of the operating budget is the general fund and the sewer fund. And that's the reason why we, uh, typically focus on the general fund. That's where, uh, all of our tax revenue and our core operations are funded. For the general fund, uh, we're looking at a projected $2.3 million loss uh, come to fruition. That would come out of our rainy day reserve. So for general fund revenues, as you can see, the majority, again, does come from, uh, tax revenues, uh, with property tax, again, being the number one revenue source for the city at, uh, just over $66 million. Uh, this table, as you've seen in previous presentations, shows basically 30 years of property tax revenues. Um, obviously, um, historical revenues from the left and projected revenues to the right. Uh, for fiscal year 2022, we're projecting $66 million. For sales tax, uh, we're projecting a four-year recovery. Uh, for context, looking back to the dot-com boom-bust, we had a five-year recovery. Great recession, we had a five-year recovery. Uh, for the recession, uh, from the pandemic, we're estimating a four-year recovery. And fiscal year 2022 is in the middle of the recovery. So for our Bradley Burns, our local 1%, $19.4 million. And for our Measure S, a local quarter percent, $6.1 million. Uh, looking at the property transfer tax, uh, this is just a little bit of context uh, to show that the metrics for, um, real estate have really been unchanged by the pandemic. Uh, as you can see in the maroon bars, that's the median sales price for a single-family residence in, uh, the city of San Mateo. That combined with the historic low interest rates, uh, just, um, in early June, the, um, average mortgage rate for a, um, a, a mortgage is just under 3%. So very low mortgage rates, and that really is a benefit to the city. Uh, to the left, that's, uh, historical property transfer tax. Uh, I want to stress that this is one of the city's, uh, most volatile revenue sources. You go back to the Great Recession, you can see, uh, we took quite a dip. And we're projecting, based on the performance that we've seen, uh, in spite of the pandemic, that we will return to our 10-year average of $8.5 million and then grow by, uh, CPI, uh, the intervening years. For TOT, uh, quite a different story. Uh, we've, we were hit quite hard, uh, with the pandemic, um, and we have not recovered. Uh, as you know, the city's primary, uh, tax base for TOT is business travel. Uh, business travel is one of the, expected to be one of the last, um, sectors to recover, if at all. And because of that, we're, um, projecting a very modest, uh, recovery over the 10-year forecast uh, by 2031, uh, barely getting back to 50% of our pre-pandemic, uh, TOT levels. One of the few bright spots, thanks to, uh, the federal stimulus, is the American Rescue Plan Act. Uh, we have already received $9.6 million for the current fiscal year. Uh, we'll receive another $9.6 million in the next fiscal year. Uh, that, based on previous projections, that is a $630,000 increase, uh, from previous congressional estimates. Looking at the other side of the general fund, uh, the majority, again, does, uh, go to public safety. Um, and that is representative and consistent with, uh, previous, um, general fund budgets. Uh, the, the city's proposed budget does fold in the fiscal sustainability plan. Uh, first, of course, are the employee compensation, uh, you know, I guess for context from the comments from earlier, uh, we are, um, asking our employees, uh, to, to provide the ci, the general fund especially with relief, uh, to offset the significant losses in revenue that we've, um, we've had because of the, the pandemic. Uh, also as part of that, and I'll go into this on the next slide, we've identified seven, um, FTE, uh, full-time equivalent positions that we identified that will, um, not result in a reduction in the service level for our community. Uh, that, the total fully cost, full cost of that is about $1 million. Uh, the San Mateo voters approved Measure W, uh, in November of 2020 to increase the city's TOT rate, uh, from 12% to 14%. Unfortunately, because of the pandemic, uh, that additional revenue enhancement has not yet come to fruition. And then the, uh, CIP funding, uh, the Construction Services Fund, supplanting the general fund's support for other CIP projects for a five-year period, uh, beginning this coming fiscal year, again, to provide the general fund with some relief. So these are the seven positions that, uh, we recommend to council to permanently eliminate, beginning July 1st. Again, uh, $1 million in total, um, fully burdened rate, uh, to provide relief to the general fund. So looking at the, the general fund long-term plan, really just want to highlight one thing. And that is, even with $19.27 million coming into the city from the, um, American Rescue Plan Act over the next two years, we are still drawing down on our rainy day reserve by $30 million. From $54 million, uh, at the peak in fiscal year 1819 to fiscal year 2027 at $24 million. So even with the fiscal sustainability plan rolled in, with the American Rescue Plan rolled in, we are still drawing down by $30 million. Uh, the last, uh, presentation I provided to council, we focused on the relationship between general fund reserves and, uh, the, the budgeted, um, general fund expenditures. And that was based on how the city was less woefully prepared during the Great Recession compared to now. Uh, this time, I want to focus on, um, the pensions, uh, the pension liability and pension contributions relative to sales tax. Uh, the reason why the city has typically focused on this relationship is because they are both recurring revenues. One, obviously, sales tax is a recurring revenue. Pension contributions are a recurring expense. Uh, they're both, um, impacted by how the economy is doing. Uh, as, um, interests returns, return on interest perform well, then pension contributions are impacted. As the economy is, um, is growing, then sales tax theoretically should be, uh, performing well. So I want to show over time, uh, essentially over, uh, a 50-year period, starting in fiscal year 2002, how that relationship has changed. So we begin 2002, you'll note that pension contributions are at $2.4 million. They significantly grow because of, one, because of the dot-com boom-bust, two, the Great Recession. Three, you see the advent of, uh, online commerce, reducing the sales tax base. And you see pension contributions going, reaching a peak of about $30 million. Um, you'll note that they begin to draw down. There are three major caveats with the, the data that I'm showing to the council. One is that, um, it assumes that after 2022, that CalPERS will meet its, uh, its target, uh, investment return. So there are no gains or no losses to be amortized. Two is that sales tax will continue to grow at a modest rate. And three, this also, excuse me, folds in, um, And three, this also, excuse me, folds in CalPERS reducing its discount rate down to 6.5%. The reason for that is, they are currently going through an asset liability management cycle, which ultimately results in what they, the board recommends to have as their discount rate, which is their level of risk. They also have, as I mentioned in the administrative report, the risk mitigation policy. At present, CalPERS is earning 20% on the year. If that holds true for the remainder of the fiscal year, the, there is trigger language in that policy that will reduce auto, immediately, the discount rate by 20 basis points. The assumption in this presentation is that it will not be additive. That's a question that I posed directly to CalPERS. Will, as a part of the ALM cycle, will it be additive with the risk mitigation policy? If they both result in a reduction, will it be additive? The assumption with this presentation is it will not be additive, but rather cumulative. So there will be, we're reflecting an overall reduction of, of 50 basis points on the discount rate. Moving on to the CIP for the five-year period. Really, the focus on this, of course, is the Clean Water Program, the sanitary sewer and wastewater management. Altogether, for the next fiscal year, the CIP is $52.6 million. And the Clean Water Program is nearly 60% of the total CIP for the year. And for the next three years, as you can see in the maroon bar here, that is the, the Clean Water Program. In terms of the funding sources, where the money is coming from, again, because of the Clean Water Program, this largely is coming from the sewer enterprise fund. I mentioned previously, for next, for 2023, you'll notice spike up in the, the all-other funds. That represents a grant that we're going to get from the CPUC for the 25th Avenue undergrounding. Again, focusing on the Clean Water Program over the next five years, 100, over $130 million that the city will be investing in, in our wastewater treatment plant and our collection systems. You'll note that at the top line, that's our collection systems. That's where the majority of the five-year CIP is going to be spent for our basins. So the recommendation this evening is to adopt resolutions to approve the fiscal year 2021-22 operating capital budgets, the 2021-22 position budget, the fiscal year 2021-22 GAN appropriations limit, and the fiscal years 2021-26 capital improvement program. Before I hand it over to the council for any questions, I do want to acknowledge the work of my staff, in particular, our Budget Analyst Renee Halcon. Without her work, late nights and weekends, many, many weekends and nights, this would not have been possible. So I definitely acknowledge her work. And with that, I welcome any questions from the council.
Thank you, Rich and Renee. Councilmember Gotoz, I see your hand up first.
Thank you very much. Rich, a little historical perspective. The 2008 Great Recession for municipalities really lasted into 2012 and 2013 with the impacts, didn't it?
That's correct, yes. And the recovery took, yes, the recovery took quite some time to get there.
And at least locally in San Mateo, our response, you know, we, we made it through that without laying anyone off. And we were even able to build up our reserves. I think you mentioned in there that we built up the reserves over $50 million.
Correct. So at the peak for 2019 in our, our rainy day reserve, again, that, by definition, that's the amount of general fund reserve that we have above and beyond our 25% by policy of reserve. That reached a peak of $54 million in fiscal year 19.
And this council has made the, the decision to, to spend down on those rainy day funds in order to save jobs and make sure that we're not laying people off right now. In fact, our budget is not balanced. We're, we're spending at least 20, tell me how much the, the number is, but millions of dollars more than we have every year right now.
Correct. Our, as shown in the general fund, if all of our projections come to fruition, general fund reserves will be spent down by $2.3 million for fiscal year 2022.
The situation is dire. I mean, we, we, there was a discussion of, of can we provide raises? And I know we'd love to give raises to everybody, and we know that the cost of living is going up. But given the information you just gave us, if, if we give anybody a raise, we have to identify who's getting laid off. Is that fair to say?
I think that's, I think that's a fair statement, yes.
Okay. And I think this council has said before, and I would say it again, that we're trying to weather this storm and make it through this period without laying people off. That's our commitment to our work staff, so. These are dire times. It is tough. I'm glad that we built up those reserves to the point that we did. Thank you very much for the presentation, Rich.
Well, thank you. Councilmember Papin.
Rich, can you take us to Slide 21 again? It shows the spending on the reserves.
Slide 21, one second.
So tell me again, at the end of what this, how, how long a period will be? We will have delved into it by $30 million. So it's, I think, what, seven years, eight years?
Eight years, correct, from the high in 2019 until the low in 2027.
And that's just to kind of keep the lights on, as it were, right?
That's correct.
Okay. And then the money that we got from the federal government, that's to satisfy existing contractual obligations with employees?
To your point, yes, that keeps the lights on. And again, I want to emphasize that this also folds in the fiscal sustainability plan. So the $1 million of positions that we've strategically and permanently eliminated, two years of, of zero for our, our bargaining units, that's already folded in.
Okay. That just sort of puts it in context, following along with the previous line of questioning. It just sort of puts it in context for all of us. And I think it's important, I appreciate the work that was done on it. I also appreciate the reservations that you have about the discount rate with the pension funds. 20% sounds great, but they reduce that discount rate by, what did you say? Five tenths percent? What was it? Five percentage points?
Correct. So absent any action by the CalPERS Board pursuant to the risk mitigation policy, if they reach, well, they're already at 20%, if they hold 20% through the end of this fiscal year, the discount rate will automatically be reduced by 20 basis points.
Okay. Thank you.
Rich, if that, oh, I'm, well, I'll just finish my question, and I'll go back to you, Councilmember Lee. With that, with that discount rate automatic trigger decrease, is that, how long is that taking to effect until it gets triggered back or readjusted?
So their, their intent with that risk mitigation policy was to, over time, bring the discount rate down to basically 6% without causing immediate pain to the member agencies. However, what they had to do with the last discount rate reduction was to suspend the risk mitigation policy. Because reducing the discount rate by 50 basis points, that for some agencies was untenable. And yet, we find ourselves having to reduce the discount rate again. They've, I've been attending, you know, every meeting that I can with the stakeholder, with CalPERS stakeholders. That is the message that they are sending, that we need to be prepared for the discount rate to potentially go down.
Thank you. Our Councilmember Lee.
Thank you. This is a question for Drew. I, I just wanted to clarify for public record that all of our employees are being asked to make concessions, that this fiscal sustainability plan in no way singles out one bargaining unit over another, that, that there is equity across the entire organization, regardless of whether you're in a management unit or, or an essential worker at the front lines.
That's correct. We've asked the, the same of all employees.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. If there's no more questions, I'd like to open up a public comment for this item.
Mr. Mayor, I have no hands raised at this time. Oh, I take that back. First speaker is Drew.
Hello again. I actually really appreciate this, this presentation. Thank you to staff. That was very enlightening. I learned a bunch, I always do. So thanks so much. A few thoughts, a few comments. So one, I, I do push back a little bit comparing the rainy fund at the max peak versus like years later. I mean, that's a little bit like, you know, it needs to be a little more apples to apples. I mean, you have the max after booming economy for lots of years, and then you're like a few years after this pandemic. So just a little bit there, but I appreciate the data itself. And then, you know, I personally would rather just a little bit like, let's be honest, we need to impact services, and we maybe need to not backfill a few more positions or something and have those hard conversations versus promises we're not going to impact services. Because when people leave because they can get paid somewhere else, it impacts services. There's a churn cost, and that happens in all over the city. It happens with firefighters, it happens with police, public works, staff, engineers, you know, administrative people, the whole thing. So I think a little bit back to my days in private industry and stuff where some of these things come up. And sometimes we just have to take a hit and say, we're not going to backfill that position, so we have a little extra salary to do the right thing for everyone else, or for just stuff internally. And instead of, well, you're not allowed to have a disk drive, an extra floppy disk. This goes way back because we have no money for a $1 part when we're paying you thousands of dollars. I just think a little bit there. And, and I think, you know, if no one on staff is getting a pay increase for COLA or anything, that's one thing versus if some people are getting increases. I'm not talking about promotions, that someone might get promoted from level one to level two. But I mean, it's, I don't, I think it's got to be across the board. It's got to be top staff all the way down to the bottom, that no one's getting any kind of adjustments in their salaries or any bonuses or benefits or anything. I mean, when I hear statements like, hey, certain groups and stuff, I understand we all got to take one for the, for the team. I've done that in, in my life along the way and stuff. So I just, let's be real, if we need to cut some, we need to not backfill some positions and just tell folks, hey, we do need to make impact of services. I've heard about a stormwater tax coming at some point. You know, I just feel like there's these little pieces floating out there. Instead of, let's have those hard talks with the citizens about what we need to do. Thank you.
I have no other hands raised.
Thank you. I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to council for more additional questions, more comments, and then, and potentially a motion.
I'm ready to make a motion if there are no other comments, but.
Please.
Okay. I will move that we adopt resolutions to approve the fiscal year 21-22 operating and capital budget, the 21-22 position budget, the fiscal year 21-22 GAN appropriations limit, and the fiscal years 21 through 26 capital improvement program.
I will second that.
All right. Councilmember Papin?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Gotoz?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bonilla?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thanks again, Rich. Okay, we're going to move on to the second public hearing, item number 22, Downtown Business Improvement Area Annual Renewal. And we have our Economic Development Manager Jennifer Chen to present to us. All yours, Jennifer.
So the item before you is the Downtown Improvement Area's annual renewal for the council to consider its adoption for fiscal year 21-22. Luke Cohen is actually going to be providing a brief overview of the DSMA efforts in the past year. Take it away, Luke. And I'll run the PowerPoint for you, Luke, so give me a second as I share the screen. Counsel, can you see the, can you see the presentation?
Yes, it looks good.
Great.
Thanks, Jennifer. Hey, good evening, Mayor and City Council. This is Luke Cohen, President of the Board for the DSMA. Tonight, I'm going to provide council with the annual progress report on the DSMA. Tonight, I'll start with the current downtown business climate, past year's accomplishments, next year's goals, challenges, and budget. I asked council the same questions for the end. So downtown is open and back. I don't know if any of you saw our, our two-page ad in the Daily Journal from the weekend, but we, we updated our, all of our businesses downtown with hours and, and days, and new and old fixed. And I hope that helps to get the summer off to a great start. It's already been really busy and looking really, really promising. So I know it's been difficult for small businesses downtown. San Mateo has seen new businesses like Mochinita, Dozone, Tybalt, and other businesses open during COVID. And while the business turnover has been slower than non-pandemic times, the downtown retail vacancies have been much lower than originally predicted. And businesses are hiring. Visitors and employees are returning to the downtown. Anecdotally, this morning, when I parked to go to work, I had to actually go up to the third floor in the central parking garage, which is the first time I've had to do that in 18 months. So, so it seems like we're really heading in the right direction. So, slide two? All right. So despite organizational challenges, operating without an executive director for three years, I think it's three years, it's been a slog, you know? We've all pitched in, the board's been working really hard. We've had a lot of accomplishments for this last year. Proactively, we've supported downtown businesses during the crisis by mutual coaching, mentoring. We've done a lot of advertising, tried to support the businesses with the outdoor dining, with the takeout and online classes in the local paper. We've done a lot of dissemination of information about the COVID health order and information to the public through social media newsletters. We've reacted, reactivated the downtown cleaning porter to help the downtown clean and keep everything looking spiffy. We've recruited a lot of new board members and continued to meet regularly, monthly, with the board on Zoom. And we've gotten really good attendance from our board, I must say, and, and the city staff also. All of this has happened with an all-volunteer board and great continued support from the city manager's office. So for goals for 21-22, the DSMA has the following goals for the next fiscal year. We are in the midst of launching a mobile-ready website to promote downtown. And it's, it's going to be really cool when it's done. We've been working really hard on it. Our treasurer, Seamus, has taken the lead on that. And we've been working with a company down in Long Beach that does this for other cities. And we really liked the other, the other, the other city's sites. And we, we wanted to emulate what, what they have going on. So that is going to be coming up, and I'm, again, really excited about that. And I'm, again, really excited about that. We've been supporting businesses with our regular marketing to promote downtown. We are collaborating with the city council, city staff on all types of downtown issues. I must say again that if it weren't for the real proactive, hands-on approach the city has taken, I know Jennifer's been working weekends and nights and lots of time to try and help these businesses through these parklets and all the special problems. And it's really been a help to them because it helped get us through some really, really dark times downtown. And, and also I should say on this same, the same, at the same time, the cleaning that's gone on, even when things were really grim downtown, it was really important to me that things were looking like nice. We didn't want people coming down even for takeout and having things look untidy or less than nice and clean. And that's been going on through this whole mess. So I'm really happy with the state of, you know, the, the planters and the trash situation and just the cleanliness in general. And also, if you recall, we did reduce our fees last year or this, this last fiscal year to help with the businesses. We reduced our annual fees by 50% and, and we're going to continue that for 2122 based on the 1920 rates. The challenges the DSMA faces are similar to what a lot of downtowns are going through. We're experiencing a potentially slow and long recovery, but, you know, COVID-19 could throw us a curve, but we're delighted that we're fully open. And having said that, there's still a lot of uncertainty through the rest of 21 with the variant and how quickly the businesses can get back up and running. And from the way things looked this last weekend, it was really busy downtown. So it's, it's looking good. I don't want to be overly optimistic, but it seems like I'm seeing groups of tech workers, you know, going to lunch. And like I say, the parking being busy and it, it feels good, but we still got to keep working hard. I know that the downtown's always going to need help with this cleaning. And the DSMA assessments that help with that is really key to the customer experience downtown to keep things nice and clean and getting people to come back. So the DSMA still is going to have some, some issues going forward because we had to put on hold a strategic focus on providing equitable assessment distribution amongst the downtown businesses. And, and I think that we're going to start looking back into that for next, for next June. So we really, again, need to return to seeking an equitable assessment distribution amongst all of the downtown businesses. So as far as finances go, we collect our, our fees on a quarterly basis, or the city does, and they're transferred to us. The assessments are a general estimate and can change based on how the businesses are doing downtown. However, we anticipate around $102,000 in income due to the reduction of assessments. And in fiscal year 2021, the estimated expenses are about 170. The difference will come from savings and reduce the remaining cash balance for the organization. And keep in mind, the, the DSMA only uses about 3% of our budget for administration. The remaining will be used for cleanliness, marketing, updating the website, and other special projects. So I want to thank you guys for your consideration. I want to stress that during the past quarter, the DSMA has been grateful for the time and effort that city staff has continued to provide the DSMA. And in particular, I want to call out Lance Hall from Public Works, who has just been unbelievable downtown. He's really jumped in. His heart is really in it. And he is, he's really living and breathing downtown. And also, I want to say to the council in particular, you guys have been great. I know that there have been a lot of challenges and I really appreciate your concern in helping to stem some of the worst of, you know, problems that we went through in the last, in the last year. So thank you.
Okay, I'll, I'll bring it back to council for any questions from council members. Okay, I'm not seeing any questions. I had one question. This is probably for Lou. You know, I, I was just curious, it seems like you've gone now three years without hiring a, a permanent director. Do you feel like there's a, like a current path to getting back to that point? Or do you feel that, that basically unless something happens that's unexpected or some, basically a miracle happens, then, then that would be the catalyst to, to get back to potentially having a full-time director?
So in, in my mind, you know, this, we, we had a path towards the full-time director. And that was in part going to happen with some changing in the way we charged or did our assessments. And we were on that, we were on that path and COVID came. So if things keep getting better and we can get back to a point where we can make our assessments more equitable for all of our members, I think there is a way that, you know, I mean, to be honest, I can't do this forever. It's, it's been a lot of work. And now especially with business coming back to life, it's been, it's been hard the last, you know, month or so. But I think there is a path and that's what's keeping me going, Eric, is that, the thought that that's going to happen someday. Again, our, our board's been working really hard. We have all a lot of volunteer hours in to make it happen. And, and I think we all have the stamina, keep going until we can get to that point.
And that's why I ask, because I know that you guys are, the, the entire board, especially you, but the, the entire board is kind of burning the candles at both ends right now. And I just don't see it as, as long-term sustainable. So I'm hoping that there's, you know, hopefully after we were recovered and, and you're able to implement your plan finally, that there's a path, a path there to, to basically bring the DSMA back to what it was several years ago. Okay, I'm going to open up a public comment now.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have one. Tany Lisa Nash.
Good evening, Mayor Rodriguez and the council. Hello, Mr. Cohen. And, and Jennifer, I would like to thank everyone for your focus on really making the downtown everything it can be. While we've gone through a very difficult year, there is an opportunity for San Mateo to be strategic in the coming 12 months, to say that we can become the heart of the peninsula. And we can rally around our small businesses, rally around our downtown, and use it as an economic engine, a way of bringing our community together. You've already done so much with outdoor dining, with really trying to get people to come back. I think Jennifer has done so much with trying to get civic engagement involved. But I think we need to make the next year a concerted effort to make that strategic plan happen to clean up the downtown. Because while we have done what we can with our funds, there is so much more we have to do if we want to make the downtown someplace people come and say, I really want to come back to San Mateo. I want to be in San Mateo and to work, combine the downtown with Hillsdale, with 25th, with 42nd. We have so many opportunities. And I think this year is the year to make it happen. And right now, to really augment what the DSMA is doing, which is great work, but to really get out and clean up the downtown, get people back, start doing promotions, and then be strategic about how we want San Mateo to be positioned versus other cities who are also trying to, you know, attract dollars, attract people. We have the assets. Let's make it something we all can be even more proud of than we are. Thank you.
I have no other speakers.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to council for any additional comments.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
I'd like to say that I think the DSMA has really performed in a stellar manner over the last couple of years, given the extremely difficult situations that, that they've had to overcome. I think Mr. Cohen has risen way above and beyond, but he couldn't do it alone. Okay, the whole crew did it. They maintained as well as they could. Actually, I think downtown is doing comparatively very well. Okay. And I appreciate his report. I think he said it all very clearly. It's important that we do look to the future and try to help the DSMA and the downtown find ways to really come even more back to life. I think we're going to see changes because of the end of the COVID. Some of our street settings are going to change. And it is hard for, I think, a, a business organization like that with oversight over the entire downtown to cope with a lot of really fast, rapidly coming changes. But this has to happen. And I think that I'm so glad that Jennifer's on board to help make these things happen. I really appreciate her experience and, and her outreach, her ability to converse with these people in, in the same language. So I support this report and I recommend that we accept this and adopt a resolution to levy the annual assessment for the downtown business improvement area for fiscal year 2122.
Before, before we do that, I, I just want to make sure every council member has a chance to say their comments. I know Councilmember Lee has her hand up. Do you want to say a few words?
Yes, I, I just wanted to make sure that we, we really formally appreciate the work that you've done, Lou. I don't think anyone really knows when they're walking down the street or patroning one of the businesses or even the business has a chance to, you know, survive the, the pandemic or even open up shop as they come, come into the downtown, that you've had a hand in all of that. Your legacy in this community is very real. And, and I just want to make sure that you hear loud and clear from, from our council how deeply, how much impact you have had and how deeply appreciated you are as a leader in this community. The number of volunteer hours that you have dedicated to sustain so many businesses beyond your own is, you know, is commendable beyond words. And I, I just want you to know that the ways that our city has operated in partnership with you is, you know, is something that we are, I, I think, you know, very, very in strong, in strong support of continuing and want to see the organization continue to grow under your leadership and, and hopefully give you a chance to enjoy your, your next chapter. You've been a lifeline for, for the downtown. And, and we know that at this point, you're running on fumes. So building, building the bench and building sustainable organizational change is, is most certainly a priority. So thank you.
Yeah, I definitely concur with, with the, these past comments. And, you know, oftentimes when somebody passes an elected official, they'll say, thank you for your service. Well, I think we all thank not only you, but you're the entire board of the DSMA for all their service and everything you do to make our downtown what it is today. So I believe Deputy Mayor made a motion to approve this resolution. Do I have a second? I will second that motion.
Thank you. Okay, Deputy Mayor Bonilla?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Gothols?
Yes.
Councilmember Pappen?
Yep.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Great, thank you, Jennifer and Lou. Okay, we're going to move on to the next item, which is Old Business, number 23, Safe Streets Initiative Evaluation. And we have Bethany Lopez, Senior Engineer, back to present to us. Welcome, Bethany. Go ahead.
Thank you.
Mr. Cohen, I would, I'd like to ask you to mute your mic, please.
Can you all see my screen here?
Yes, we can.
Great, thank you so much. Thank you for the introduction. Thank you, councilmembers, for having me.
Excuse me, excuse me. Yep, I'm, I'm sorry. I was looking at somewhere else. I was looking at your picture, not the screen. I shouldn't have said that.
Sure, one moment.
There we go.
All right. And you again for having me. I'm Senior Engineer with the Public Works Department. And tonight I'm going to be presenting on the program evaluation for the Safe Streets Initiative. So just to, to dive right in, the initiative was proposed in response to the COVID-19 pandemic as a way to provide additional space for residents to recreate and to exercise with the goal of discouraging traffic and increasing pedestrian awareness on these select roadways. The current Safe Streets Initiative, or excuse me, current Safe Streets locations were implemented in late July of last year. These locations were proposed following feedback from council to remove several of the first-generation implementation locations as a result of some increased traffic volumes in the areas. The initial cost to implement the program, including staff time and materials, was around $50,000. Since the implementation, the cost to maintain the program has been around $4,000 per month. That included both staff time and material costs. Most of that, however, was staff time. If the program were to continue, it would amount to about $50,000 per year to maintain. So staff analyzed the initiative locations to determine how their use changed compared to the prior year and to determine if they met the goals of reducing vehicle volumes and increasing pedestrian volumes. Staff also reviewed data on how nearby streets changed compared to the prior year in an effort to determine what changes may have only been caused by the pandemic and those that can be attributed to the actual implementation. So for example, in this table, vehicular volumes on Claremont Street reduced by 25% over the same time, same time period the prior year. Nearby roadways to Claremont saw a 25% reduction in volume over the same time, excuse me, same time period over the prior year. Because the volume's reduced by about the same percentage between Claremont and the nearby street, it does not appear that the Safe Street implementation itself had a significant impact on reducing volumes on this roadway. So in general, when looking at this table, the volume of both Safe Streets and nearby streets reduced by about 25%, indicating that the volume reduction on these roadways was not a result of the Safe Streets Initiative. And this is, the, the volume reduction in general is, has been seen to be due to the pandemic and the changes in, in behaviors of things like people going to work and having to shelter in place. No data has been provided for West Kind as it was closed off completely, which is different from the rest of the implementation where new traffic was allowed, but discouraged. So next, we wanted to review the pedestrian data for the same time period. So we were looking at year-over-year changes. It was found that only Fremont and 28th Avenue saw increases in pedestrian activity compared to the same time the prior year and compared to their other nearby streets. And so again, looking at this data, we see that year-over-year, Fremont and East 28th Avenue saw an increase of 120, excuse me, 133 and 125% respectively, compared to their nearby street counterparts, which increased about 55% and 48%. These increases are thought to be due to the Safe Streets implementation. We also reviewed data from the beginning of the pandemic to to earlier this year to determine how usage has been over time over their implementation. And this shows that all streets except for West Kind decreased in usage, but Grant and Fremont reduced at a slower but Grant and Fremont reduced at a slower rate. And so again, looking at the data, we see that Grant reduced in usage by 53% compared to nearby streets, which reduced volumes by 66%. So again, Grant, the volumes reduced at a slower rate there. Additionally, as I mentioned, West Kind saw an increase in.
Okay, it looks like we are having some technical difficulties. I have a question for the city manager. Well, first off, is it, okay, making sure everybody else is on there and it's not just me. Should I'm assuming we'll wait a little bit of time. And then if she's not back on, should we pause this item and move on to the next one, then come back?
Yes, that's what I would advise.
Okay. Let's give it a couple more minutes and see if it's just a temporary thing or more than temporary. She's just getting on the roll too. Okay, well, I'm thinking since in the interest of time, maybe we want to start on the next the next agenda item and we'll just come back. Is there any objections to that from council? Okay, not hearing any. All right, so we're going to pause that one and we're going to move to the next item under Old Business, which is item number 24, Outdoor Dining, Extension of Temporary Outdoor Dining Program and Establishment of Pedestrian Mall and Parklet Program. And for that, we have our Assistant City Manager, Kathy Kleimbahn, going to present.
Good evening, City Council. Glad to be before you tonight. So tonight we'll be talking about several items related to our outdoor dining program. Sorry, I'm telling issues advancing my slides.
No worries. We can see you. So that's good.
Yes. All right, so the three items that we'll really be focusing on tonight. One is the extension of our temporary downtown street closures and parklet program. We'll be looking to adopt a resolution of intent to establish pedestrian malls on B Street and then also discussing the adoption of the guidelines for our permanent parklet program. So starting with the extension of the temporary street closures and parklets. As everyone is aware, the state, as part of its reopening, has removed all capacity limits for restaurants and bars. So now everyone's allowed to operate inside at full capacity again. However, COVID hasn't entirely gone away and everyone knows that outdoor activities continue to be a great way to help reduce the spread of COVID. So recently, a week or two ago, the governor sent a letter to all local jurisdictions urging them to continue to allow outdoor dining through the end of the calendar year to help facilitate public health and economic recovery. Our current temporary street closures and parklets are set to expire in September, the end of September, which was what was adopted by council back in February of this year. Staff is suggesting that we extend the temporary programs through the end of the calendar year. This will get the businesses through the nice warm weather that we have through October and give them more time for the ones that want to transition to permanent parklets to apply for permits and work through that program. That would be the recommendation for that item. Related to that, we do have an emergency moratorium that's in place that relates to outdoor uses in private shopping centers. So these are, you know, shopping centers that this moratorium allows us to waive the minimum parking standards and zoning regulations that prohibit the use of outdoor dining in these private shopping centers. This moratorium, we renewed several times, is in place for 90 days at a time and will expire on August 15th. We have been very recently receiving more complaints about spillover parking issues in the neighborhoods as a result of these private parking lots being in business use. Most of these shopping centers are located immediately adjacent to residential properties. So for this particular item, staff is recommending that we let this current moratorium expire on August 15th and not renew it back. So that would be different from the other recommendation. Moving on to the street closures. At the May 17th City Council meeting, the council directed staff to move forward with evaluating street closures between First and Second Avenues and between Second and Third Avenues on B Street. It's really important to note, this still allows for east-west traffic flow along First, Second, and Third Avenue. The state governs this process through this Pedestrian Mall Act, which is actually legislation adopted in the 1960s that outlines a very, very specific process of how you go about closing streets. The first step in the process, which is before you tonight, is adopting the resolution of intent to close the streets, which sets the public hearing date for 90 days after, which would be September 20th. Following the adoption of the resolution, if the council does so tonight, staff will be notifying all the property owners and tenants on the closed streets and also posting placards on the streets. During the next 90 days, property owners and tenants can submit objections and also claims for damages if they feel they'll be economically harmed by the street closures. If the majority of property owners in any of these two segments object to the closure of that segment, the city is not allowed to move forward. In addition, if we do get any claims for damages, we have to resolve them before we can move forward. I just want to remind the council of a few components of the street closure. So although the streets will be closed through traffic, we will allow vehicles that serve the businesses, such as garbage trucks or delivery vehicles, to access the street prior to 10:00 AM every day. The businesses located along those closed streets will certainly be able to continue to use the right of way for their needs. However, whatever they put out there must be removable if we're ever going to be able to hold any special events or even something like a farmer's market in the future. In addition, staff recommends that we would move forward with capital improvements to replace the water-filled barricades currently blocking off the street with something such as bollards, and we also would need to make some adjustments to the existing traffic signals to take them down for the street to no longer operational. And that'll cost roughly $400,000. We would, long-term, look at probably raising up the level of the street to be flush with a sidewalk, which is a fairly expensive proposition, probably a million or two per block. It is possible at the time that you establish a pedestrian mall to establish an assessment district to help pay for the improvements, although you can do so at a later date. Staff does recommend deferring the establishment of an assessment district because most of the property owners are receiving limited rents right now as a result of the pandemic. And we wouldn't want this to get in the way of their support for moving forward with the street closures. However, when we move forward with the longer-term improvements some point in the future, we would recommend looking at assessment districts at that point in time to help pay for that. Moving on to our parklet program. As a result of the success of our temporary parklet program, there's been a lot of interest from restaurants in having parklets well beyond the pandemic, not just downtown, but in all areas of the city. We discussed this matter back in February and council gave direction on several items, including allowing or giving permission for the parklets to be for private business use as opposed to requiring them to be only available for anyone in the public who wants to sit there. Limiting the parklets to the frontage of the businesses. Also limiting the number of parking spaces that can be used for each parklet. And also, we discussed charging a parklet application fee plus an annual per parking space used encroachment fee. We also discussed how parklets will need to provide their own traffic protection measures. So we would take away the water-filled barricades that are surrounding each and every parklet. And they would need to be redesigned to allow the stormwater flow into the curbs and gutters along the street and also to meet all ADA requirements. Furthermore, unfortunately, the roofs and trellises that we see out there right now, those are actually not really permitted under the building code. There's sort of been a lot of looking the other way during the pandemic, but longer term, those would need to be removed. And primarily, we would use things like umbrellas for shade in the parklets. There is also an urban design benefit to that. So right now, if you are walking in the opposite side of the street or even driving in the middle of the street, you'll notice you don't really see the storefronts behind the parklets. So there's a lot of visibility that's lost as a result of these roofs and trellises that we would regain if we had just the the railings as a typical parklet has. So staff has drafted guidelines, which are before you tonight, for adoption as well as draft fees. However, there's a couple items that we're looking for additional council feedback on. Before I get into those items, I just want to again emphasize the difference between the parklets we have right now, which are, these are a few examples of our pandemic parklets with roofs and these really delightful water-filled barricades that are out on the street. And this is what parklets actually look like in normal times. These are a few examples from San Francisco or other cities, as well as if you notice in the upper left corner, that's a parklet that we piloted in front of Plaza a couple of years ago. So this is the look we're going for. So some of the questions I have before you. The first relates to the number of parking spaces. So when I presented to you in February, we made the recommendation that no more than two parallel spaces or three angled spaces could be used for parklets. When we evaluated this a little bit further with all the setbacks that are required for safety reasons to make sure that these parklets aren't clipped by cars parking in adjacent spaces, we think that the parklets in the angles or perpendicular spaces will be really small if three is the maximum number of spaces they can use. So we want to allow for up to four spaces for these parklets, which is actually equivalent in square footage to just two parallel spaces. The annual fee would still be based on a per-space use. And we also would still limit them to the frontage of the storefront. So they wouldn't all necessarily be four spaces, but we just wanted to increase that maximum allowance. The other consideration relates to the parklet fees. So back in February, we discussed a $500 application fee. And this covers the staff time needed to review the parklet application as well as inspections that need to occur for the parklets. And that may seem steep, but there's literally three departments involved that need to review this and go out and inspect them in the field looking at different aspects of the parklets. In addition, we discussed the annual encroachment fee being $1,000 per parking space. And that is based on the average annual revenue we get from the downtown parking spaces, averaged across the garages and the on-street spaces. We did discuss that we would apply that throughout the city, even in areas where there aren't current fees for parking, but just 25th Avenue. And I have drafted, as part of the resolution adopting the parklet guidelines, these fees to be added to the annual fee schedule for the next fiscal year. However, it has come to our attention that some cities for the initial year, as many businesses are trying to retain parklets that they created during the pandemic, are either waiving or reducing fees. So I just wanted to bring that question before the council to see if there's any interest in either reducing the annual encroachment fee or waiving it for the first year of the program. But staff does recommend that the one-time application fee still be charged no matter what because of the amount of staff time and resources it does take to review these permanent applications. So these are the three items before council. The adoption of the resolution extending the temporary street closures and outdoor dining program. The adoption of the resolution of intent to create the pedestrian malls. And also the resolution approving the parklet program guidelines and the fees for the parklet program application and annual encroachment. And for that, we are looking for guidance on the three versus four maximum parking spaces as well as the fees for this year. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kathy. I'd like to bring it back to council for additional questions.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, please.
So I'm looking, Kathy, at the slide which showed parklets in angled or perpendicular parking spaces. I ask this because I spoke with Rafat Haddad at 3Bs this morning, who I think will be very happy to hear of the extension through the end of December for those uses that are there. But he was planning for those changes. And amongst his changes were the idea that rather than just having three or now four of the angled spaces that they have on that part of Third Avenue between B and Ellsworth. Since the block is almost entirely restaurants from one end to the other, he was wondering about the idea of joint parklets, just like one larger parklet that could serve the restaurants. They would share the costs. They would share the space. They would work out amongst themselves. So when I looked at your slide, which the small print was kind of small, but I'm seeing here on that slide on the lower right-hand corner, item four there, parklet length varies on a case-by-case basis and will depend on what is approved. Does that mean there's leeway for downtown restaurant users to apply for this kind of use that I just described?
Yes, yes, there is actually. So we did mention in the parklet guidelines that there can be parklets shared between businesses. There's a couple considerations. First of all, it can't exceed the frontage of the combined businesses. So if there was a business in the middle, you know, that's something for consideration that I didn't want the parklet. And then also for the fire department, they need access every, I don't remember off the top of my head, but every certain distance to get to the fire equipment. And so that's something actually in place right now with the temporary parklet program where there's kind of little gaps so that the fire department.
Right. Okay, thank you.
As needed.
This is Robert from Fire. It's every 100 feet.
Thank you.
That said, I think I can go ahead and just say the other things I think, okay? I support the reduction of the annual fee from 1,000 to 500. I think that's fair per parking space. And I also support following the recommendation to go along with the governor's recommendation for the end of the year, also regarding pedestrian malls, street leveling. I look forward to having that discussion when we get to it, but I think it's fine to hold off on that for now. And ending the moratorium on the private parking lots, I think that's reasonable now. I agree with staff on that.
Okay, before we get to color comment, do we have any other questions? Okay, I'd like to open a public comment.
I have no hands raised at this time, Mr. Mayor. Oh, wait, I do. Drew.
Sorry, I'm not fast enough for you all there. I apologize that. Thinking some other. So two points on this. Thank you for the presentation. One is kind of a really long-term one. It ties into the Dreggers redevelopment potential that if they would restore Ellsworth Avenue between Fourth and Fifth or Ellsworth Street between Fourth and Fifth, then the B Street closures, if they're successful on the current two lengths of streets, could be lengthened south. Some additional segments could be added. So it's just making sure the Dreggers development does restore Ellsworth Avenue. It could just help with a future B Street, you know, years ahead. Hopefully this is successful. So on the parklets, since there was some stuff about the design and guidelines, I do have a really specific feedback that wasn't mentioned. On 37th Avenue, there is business with a parklet. It's a local bar. It's fine. It's out there. But they have a crosswalk right after the parklet if you're driving west. And to me, that parklet should be to the west of the crosswalk instead of the east, or how it should be reversed around, but that might put their parklet not completely in front of their business. And I think there should be some leeway to adjust that a parklet could technically not be in front of a business if there's like a crosswalk for sight distance visibility, because when I drive through there, I'm always worried someone's going to come walking past the parklet. I'm not going to see that because it comes parklet and then crosswalk. And it would be better if the crosswalk is first and then the parklet. It's a very specific thing. I'm not saying in general there's a problem, but I think there's no leeway, given what I heard, to deal with shifting the parklet maybe partially in front of a neighboring business to increase. shifting the parklet maybe partially in front of a neighboring business to increase safety in a crosswalk. And so that's one specific feedback on the guidelines. Thank you.
Next speaker we have is Rayanne Motashimi.
Hi, hi, council. Thank you for taking up this issue. I'm in general in support of having a permanent parklet program. And I thank San Mateo for taking the initiative on this, as well as the street closures. I think that the street closures on B Street and going through the pedestrian mall process will be great for the town. I did, I'm not sure if I heard this correctly, but I did hear some mention of removing the moratorium on allowing for, basically on stopping the permission of parking, private parking lots being used for parklets and restaurant service. If that's what I heard correctly, I do not support that. And that's because we have a lot of parking spaces throughout the city. If you look at an aerial satellite view of San Mateo, it's largely paved surface parking lot or other kinds of street. And I think that restaurant owners, if they're hearing from their patrons or from other customers that use, might use parking, that they're having trouble accessing accessing the restaurant, they would probably decide themselves to increase the parking supply and reconvert those parklets to parking spaces. I think this is a decision that's better left to restaurants as opposed to the city making a one-size-fits-all mandate that prevents the restaurants themselves from seeing how much their customers need the parking that those parking lots provide. So I don't think it's a good idea. I think it'll encourage driving when we don't necessarily need to encourage driving and prevent us from using parking lots for other spaces and converting some of those spaces into places where people can eat and enjoy themselves. So I would not support ending that moratorium. I would support finding a way to permit restaurants to use their private parking spaces for other services. Thank you.
I have no other hands up.
Thank you. I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to council. Kathy, if you could maybe put up the the slide for the the three things you want comments on. And I don't know how much additional comment each council member is going to have, but I know that Deputy Mayor Bonilla has already kind of thrown out yes on the first two, yes on all three. And I believe he said up to four spaces, yes, and he's okay with reducing the fee. Is that right, Deputy Mayor?
Yes, and I actually brought up the subject of a suggestion I got from a business owner on Third Avenue near B regarding allowing joint uses, similar uses, restaurants to be able to form a larger parklet that they would share.
It was my understanding that that was included in the proposal. Was that right?
Right, yeah.
Okay, so we'll maybe make that the the default. Does anybody want to have a comment that that doesn't agree with with that? Councilmember Goltz, I saw your hand up.
Yes, on all three.
Okay. Anyone else? I'm not seeing, yeah, Deputy, or Councilmember Papin.
You give me all kinds of titles. Yeah, no, I, I, I think it's a, it's a reasonably tailored program that businesses can live with. So I am yes to all three as well. I think it reaches a good balance going forward, and I am for reducing the fee initially for the first year.
Great, thank you. I'm assuming Councilmember Lee is okay. Oh, I see your hand now. Councilmember Lee.
I am also in agreement. I guess my, my one thought and question would be to have a little bit of analysis on what a budget impact would be to waive the fee entirely. I'm just thinking about the the capital of of the existing built-out parklets and then the 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 added modifications that will be required to bring them into compliance. And then on top of that, the use fee, all in in very short order in in the, you know, the pandemic recovery year. So I, I would, you know, like to hear from staff if, you know, if we could absorb that cost. I, I also, I wonder if, if the moratorium, lifting the moratorium in advance of the governor's order, recommendation is is also something that is of high urgency. And I, and perhaps there's a way that we could look more case-by-case in terms of parking needs at specific sites or create some sort of standard evaluation that that could be applied to to help businesses transition. If we can retain outdoor dining on parking lots that that are supporting businesses, then I would like to figure out ways to continue to do that.
Thank you, and I'll just add my two cents. I I fully support all three. Yes to the, to the up to four spaces, and I'm okay with reducing the the fees. I I agree with Councilmember Lee that it would, might be a good to look into whether or not it's it's partial or fully. I mean, I I do think that a lot of businesses are struggling, but we're also talking about giving them a significant increased footprint where they're going to be able to to use. And hopefully they're not charged additional rent for that. So there is a pretty significant benefit there too that I think needs to be taken into account. But with that said, I guess I would entertain a motion. I don't know if they need to be all three separate ones or they can be all in one super motion. I'll look to the city attorney for that clear clarification on that.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, first, please?
Yes.
Yeah, I wanted to add that after hearing Mr. Motashimi and hearing Councilmember Lee, I do also think it would be beneficial for staff to look into the possibility of a zero fee for the next year while we're still recovering or going through changes as a result of COVID. Also, on the private moratorium, I do favor the idea that we should look into more flexibility for that and allow it to be maybe more business-driven, depending on the nature of things that staff knows about that we had, we're not really aware of right now. So those are my thoughts. And I would make a motion if we need to make three motions or one.
But I'd like to just react to your your comment. I wasn't going to talk about it, but since two council members brought it up. I actually, I disagree with that. And the reason I disagree with, because I don't think it's a one-size-fits-all, because it is a business that's, that's taking up some additional spaces in the public garages, but those are spaces that other businesses could benefit from, especially ones that might not have the open space. So I, I, I sympathize with that that notion, but I just don't think that it's, I, I don't think it's a one-size-fits-all like the, the, in the traditional sense of of how we talk about it. So just wanted to get that out there. So go ahead with motions.
If I may, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, who is that?
This is Prasanna Rosaya.
Oh, sorry.
She would ask me a question. So you may move the staff recommendation in all, in one fell swoop, like all three resolutions, or you may do them one by one. Either way is fine. I would want to just clarify what exactly is the proposed motion? Is it to move the resolutions as they are worded currently? Or is there a, there is some interest expressed in modifying the fee? So just want to clarify exactly what the motion is. Or would be.
Deputy Mayor, do you want to clarify your motion or should we just?
I'm looking at the motions and I think the first one is very clear, adopt a motion to extend the temporary street closures and outdoor dining program guidelines to the end of the calendar year per the governor's suggestions. I make that motion and also to adopt, yeah, the the resolution to, with the intent to establish pedestrian malls on B Street, first to second and second and third avenues. Okay, and also to adopt the resolution to establish guidelines for a long-term parklet program and associated permit fees. These are all as recommended by staff, and I think the other items were where staff was just requesting some input.
If I may, for the third resolution, which is adopting the parklet program guidelines and fees, as currently written, the fees are the $500 permit application fee and the $1,000 per parking space fee. So we would need a modification from council and clear direction on whether, I'm hearing either a half fee for the annual encouragement fee at $500 or waiving that fee for the first year of the program entirely. So either we would amend that resolution and change the fee to either zero or 500 from it as it's currently written as a thousand.
Okay, well, then I think maybe the council needs to talk more and make sure we have enough people in support of either half or zero.
Deputy Mayor, I mean, sorry. Diane, Mayor Diane.
So I just had a quick question, and it is that there would be no reduction then to the annual encroachment fee of $1,000 per parking spot? We're only talking about the parklet program application fee of the $500?
What what staff recommends is keeping the application fee at $500. It's just a one-time fee. But we're just requesting for the annual fee, which is per parking space, whether you want that to be in the first year, either 1,000 per parking space, 500 per parking space, or zero.
That's what I thought. Okay, that's I, I, that's what I thought. All right. So for me, if you're asking, I'm either at 500 or zero. Because I, I really feel like it's just tough, right, the second. So I, I, I'm, I definitely don't want the thousand.
I'm, I'm personally at 500, and the reason is I don't think we, I, I, I think when you give things away for free, you end up with unintended consequences sometimes. And I think that this is a valuable thing that that we're offering. And so I think that half, half off is a fair trade-off.
I'd like to add some comments because we're, we're telling parklet creators that they will have to alter their parklets to remove the roofs and make certain changes that are going to cost some money, which I came to this reasoning after thinking about it and hearing Councilmember Lee's comments. I would like to go with the zero for the first year on the per parking space fee.
Okay, do we have other, other ideas from Councilmember Lee? Go ahead.
My preference is for the first year is zero per year, but only have that applied to the existing parklet. So if someone were to apply fresh and had not already built out a parklet, they would not be essentially building two parklets in the span of, you know, 18 months. So for me, like if it's possible to structure the fee in a way that would only be applied to the, or we'd have I, I don't actually, Kathy, tell me, is this even feasible to to create some sort of tiered structure?
Yes, we can create one fee for new parklet applications and one fee for existing parklets.
Okay, then that would be my recommendation.
So zero and 1,000?
Yes.
Yeah, and I concur with that.
Okay, Councilmember Goltz and Councilmember Papin, do you, do you want to be the third vote on that? Not seeing any hands up.
I'm still thinking it through in my mind. So to the mayor, was your recommendation half off for everyone?
Uh, yeah, it was half off, but I, I can, I, I, I think that for, for new applications that already have skin in the game, I mean, I still think we should have like 70, I still think we should charge something, but but I, I do, I do respect the difference that Councilmember Lee brought up about those that have already. How much did, did current, current folks pay for their application?
We didn't charge any fees either for the application or for the parklets on the street.
I just hesitate to put something for free because then you just, you just put something out there and you have it reserved and you might not be fully invested. You just have a little bit of skin in the game, and we're not talking about a lot of dollars here. That's the only reason I'm, I'm advocating for charging something, but. And.
Could you live with 250?
Do I hear 250? I could live with 250.
Okay, I'll support 250 across the board, though.
So the final motion, I mean, to adopt the resolution to establish guidelines for a long-term parklet program and associated fees, requires a paying of $500 permit and the per parking space fee for one year at a reduced rate of $250 for existing parklets. And is it $1,000 for new applicants?
It, it's 250, I think, that I heard from the rest of the council for all parklets, per parking space. New, new and existing.
If we're all in agreement, then that's the motion. Thanks.
Second.
Great. Um, Clark, can you please call roll?
Deputy Mayor Bonilla?
Yes.
Councilmember Goltz?
Yes.
Councilmember Papin?
Yep.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, now we're going to go back to item number 23, the Safe Streets Initiative. We've been told that Bethany's connection is much better now, and so she's going to pick off where she left off.
Thank you so much. Can you hear me there? And can you see my screen?
Yes, it looks great.
Great, thank you so much. My apologies about the connection. Can you confirm that this is the slide I was comparing data from last year to this year? Or should I go back a slide or two?
Maybe go back.
This is where you left off.
Okay, great.
Okay, at the suggestion that I heard, I'm going to start one slide back just to get us all caught up here. So I was analyzing, I was, I was displaying information for our pedestrian data for year-over-year changes. And so what we had found, as I had mentioned previously, was that Fremont and 28th Avenue each had increases of about 133 and 125%. When we compared that to nearby streets, that did appear to be a result of the Safe Street implementation at those locations. So we reviewed the analysis from the beginning of the pandemic to earlier this year so that we can determine how the usage has changed over time. The status shows that all streets except for West Hine decreased in usage. However, Grant and Fremont reduced at a slower rate, which we think could have been a result of the Safe Streets Initiative. Excuse me. One of the other, some of the the changes that that we see here may have also been attributed to some seasonality differences, daylight savings as well, and also just the fact that there's more parks open and options to recreate that hadn't been open previously. So staff conducted a public survey that was released at the end of May to gauge interest in the initiative. We received nine to one responses, and we found that a little bit over a third of the participants lived on or within two blocks of a Safe Street location. About a third lived further than two blocks, and another third were unaware of the program altogether. We found that most respondents agreed that the Safe Streets created a safer place for outdoor recreation, discouraged cut-through traffic, and that the signage was clear and effective. And when we asked about the support for the program, most were in support of making the changes permanent. Staff also reviewed roadway speeds on Safe Street segments from prior to the pandemic and see how we were trying to determine how they aligned with the requirements in the city's traffic calming policy. This policy defines a, or requires that a 85th percentile speed of at least 32 miles per hour to qualify for traffic calming. 85th percentile speeds are the speeds at which 85% of vehicles are traveling at or below. It's a commonly used metric in the field. And in the segments that we had, these And in the segments that we had these analyses for prior to the pandemic, you'll see that all of them fall below the requisite speed requirements for traffic calming or for us to consider traffic calming improvements. So in summary, we see that there's a strong desire from the community to maintain the initiative. However, our data shows that it was unsuccessful in reducing vehicle volumes or consistently increasing pedestrian volumes. Further, the cost to maintain the program was greater than expected. So staff recommendation is that the current Safe Streets locations be removed, that we continue to evaluate and implement projects using a data-driven approach, and that we develop a local roadway safety plan to analyze traffic safety improvements and prioritize projects moving forward. And so we are seeking feedback from council about staff's recommendations about how to proceed with the program.
Thank you, Bethany. I'll bring it back to council for questions. Okay, I'm not seeing any question. Oh, Councilmember Lee.
Hi, Bethany. I wanted to make sure that the, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm pretty sure that when we initially conceived of the, the Safe Streets Initiative, there was an effort to, to try to, like, align it in some way, in proximity with our, our Bicycle Master Plan. And, and so there were a couple earlier streets that were piloted and then later rolled back because the neighborhood actually, it was not supportive of those streets, and they actually turned out to be somewhat ineffective. And so, you know, at one point in time, the Safe Streets Initiative had alignment, I think stronger alignment, with, with a long-term plan for safe, safer streets, right, and in the Bicycle Master Plan. At this point in time, the way that the Safe Streets have been implemented, that alignment is no, is really not, not there or, or significantly reduced. Is that an accurate statement or picture to paint in terms of, like, helping the public understand, you know, that this was a, this was conceived in a certain way, the implementation has significantly evolved, and is, and when we think about this potentially being a stepping stone to a longer-term plan, that that is, that's actually, that there's been a break in, in that, that strategy?
Sure. I think when, when it was originally conceived, there may have been some alignment with those programs. However, we were looking for locations that had, you know, close proximity to multifamily residences. As we had to shift, that wasn't necessarily the focus of the locations that we shifted to. And so, while I think there still are some locations that do align with some of those longer-term plans, again, that wasn't the, that wasn't the specific requirement that we were looking towards when making those recommendations.
Other questions from other council members? Okay, I'd like to open up a public comment on this item.
Mr. Mayor, at this time, I see no hands raised.
Okay, I'd like to bring it back to close public comment and bring it back to council for any, any other comments. Councilmember Lee.
Well, I, I support the staff recommendation. I think that it's really, it's, it served a really important purpose, was a very community-driven process, and at this point in time, I, I don't think that the cost justification is there. And so I would like us to see, be utilizing our very precious resources in ways that will deliver long-term strategic changes to make our roads safer.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Bonilla. You're on mute.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with Councilwoman Lee, and I would like to add that, you know, these changes were never intended to be permanent. These were temporary uses to help ease the harshness of COVID, and their day has come and gone. So I agree, we can't justify the cost. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I agree as well. I mean, I think residents in supporting this program are basically saying that I want our neighbors, our neighborhood streets to be safer, and I think that's what every single member of this council wants. And the real, the question is, is how do we best do that? Or more specifically, does this Safe Streets Initiative accomplish that goal? And I think the overwhelming evidence staff has presented is it doesn't. But I, I do think we, this is just another sign that we need to redouble our efforts to figure out other ways to make our streets safer, because that's what, that's what I think everybody involved wants. So if there's no other comments, I can entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the staff recommendation.
Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, can you please call roll?
This was just an item to receive information. There's no actual motion needed.
That, that's correct. The agenda description simply says, "Receive information on the evaluation and findings and provide feedback on next steps." So no motion is required.
Okay, my bad. I appreciate Councilmember Goltz going along with me on that one. Okay, so we're gonna close that, that item and move on to the next item, which is New Business, item number 25, and that's Transition to Elections by District Resolution of Intention. And we have our city attorney, Prasanna gonna present to us.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I will go right into the presentation. Again, Prasanna, city attorney. Go ahead, next slide, please. Ah, there we go. I think we may have gone a little too far.
You can use the arrow keys on the keyboard as well.
The first slide should say, what is the California Voting Rights Act?
I thought I saw it briefly.
I think, no, this is a different presentation. This would be, let's maybe, oh, yes, there's a presentation just emailed this afternoon. Just bear with us for one moment while we pull up the correct presentation.
Wait, it might be a good time to take about a five-minute break right now for everybody, and we can reconvene. Sounds good. Okay, we'll be back in five minutes, sharp, please.
We are good to go. Apologies.
No worries, it happens. If council members can come back. All right, looks like we're all here, and we're ready to resume.
Okay, thank you very much, and apologies again for the technical difficulties. I have a presentation for the council. Next slide, please. Okay, so first, what is the California Voting Rights Act? So as indicated on the slide, it is modeled on much earlier statute in federal law, the Federal Voting Rights Act, and it applies to what are called at-large election systems. For example, San Mateo's current election system is at-large. I'll be speaking about that again shortly. And so it's really designed to ensure that members of protected class can elect candidates of their choice and influence the outcomes, the outcome of elections. And really, the difference between the California Voting Rights Act and the federal version is that there's a much lower burden under California law than under federal law. So it's much easier for prospective plaintiffs to force local jurisdictions to transition to district elections. So again, the at-large versus by district. I just mentioned what an at-large system is, but it is where the entire electorate votes on all council member elections. Now compare this to a by-district elections, where each council member must reside in a particular district, and importantly, are elected by the voters in that district alone. And what constitutes a violation of the CVRA, which is called the California Voting Rights Act for this presentation? A violation will occur when you have so-called racially polarized voting. So what does that mean? That's a situation in which the ability of a protected class is impaired such that they cannot elect candidates of their choice, or rather, that ability is impaired, and the ability of a protected class to influence the outcome of an election is, is also impaired. So what is a protected class? A protected class is a group of voters who are members of a race, color, or language minority group. This is spelled out further in federal law. So the city received a demand letter from Mr. Scott Rafferty, and this letter claims that a chronic absence of minority candidates in and of itself constitutes a CVRA violation, and that moving to district elections will boost the turnout of minority voters. Now, there is an argument, as indicated in the staff report, that Mr. Rafferty has not made a case under the CVRA, and the city does not concede any violation of state or federal law. But historically, public entities that have challenged or contested a CVRA demand letter have lost in court. There's one case, it's one exception, that is currently on appeal to the California Supreme Court, that involves the city of Santa Monica. But really, the track record of cities in contesting a CVRA claims is, is not, is one of, not being successful. And cities that have contested these claims have spent hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars, litigating these claims. And sometimes in a settlement, they will pay millions in attorney's fees just for the plaintiff. Next slide, please. Which brings me to these, to this slide. Here is a short list of some Here is a short list of some significant settlements. The first two involve published court of appeal decisions. City of Palmdale, 4.7 million. City of Santa Clara, 3.1 million. And again, you can read the other bullet points involving other jurisdictions. And these settlements refer just to plaintiffs' attorney's fees and expert fees and their litigation costs. These, this does not count the city's own fees and costs. So again, I want to emphasize that, you know, even though the city could try to argue that a claim was not made, cities have not been successful in contesting these claims. And the litigation risks and costs are very high, which leads to the staff recommendation. Next slide, please. Actually, before I get there, there is a statutory procedure under state law called Safe Harbor, and it works as follows. When a demand letter is received, that starts a clock, and it is a 45-day clock where the city has to adopt so-called a resolution of intent to transition to district elections. And that acts as a stay on litigation, meaning that the writer of a demand letter cannot sue the city during that 45-day period. So San Mateo is currently within that 45-day period. We received a demand letter from Mr. Rafferty on May 24th, so that period expires, as I recall, on July 8th. If a resolution is adopted tonight, as recommended by staff, that would start an additional 90-day clock to adopt an ordinance approving district maps. And that 90-day period acts as an additional stay on litigation, meaning, again, that Mr. Rafferty could not sue the city during that period. Now, a 90-day extension can be granted. It's allowed by statute, and the city has been in discussions with Mr. Rafferty over whether that could be granted by him, and it is discretionary. Now, going through the Safe Harbor procedure would cap the attorney's fees and costs that the city would need to pay to about $30,000. It's actually adjusted by the CPI. Now it's at about $32,000. Next slide, please. So then, following an adoption of a resolution of intent, if the council chose to do so, there is a hearing process. First, there are two public hearings, hearings one and two, which would be held within a 30-day period, and this is before any district maps are drawn. And it's really designed to allow the public voice, allow for public input on how they think those district boundaries should be drawn. Now, to be sure, there is federal and state law the city would need to abide by in drawing district lines, but those first two hearings are really designed for public input. And then, at least one district map would need to be produced at least seven days before public hearing number three. Oftentimes, members of the public may submit their own maps that would also need to meet federal and state requirements. So then hearings three and four would take place to consider those maps and make adjustments. And those two hearings would occur within a 45-day period. And then the final meeting, which is sometimes referred to as public hearing number five, would involve an ordinance adoption. Next slide, please. So then that leads me to this slide, which basically spells out the staff recommendation in the form of questions. First question is, should a resolution of intent be adopted? And then the other two staff recommendations are to appropriate the funds indicated on the slide to fund work by a demographer, which is a critical role in going through the districting process, as well as public outreach. And then also, should two additional meetings be added back to the council calendar to accommodate these CVRA public hearings? And with that, that concludes my presentation. I am open for questions.
Thank you, Prasanna. Bring it to the city council for questions. Councilmember Gozles.
Question for Prasanna, our city attorney. Do we need to add back the additional meetings if we receive additional time from the litigant?
So that's a good question. You know, at this time, we have not received even a 90-day extension yet. But if it turns out that the city receives perhaps something more than a 90-day extension, perhaps a tolling agreement such that additional meetings would not be required, then, you know, those meetings could be canceled at a later, at a later date. But I think since we have not received any additional time yet from the prospective plaintiff's attorney, I think the staff recommendation is to, for the time being, add those meetings back on the calendar.
And perhaps I'm jumping the gun here, were we going to give time to Mr. Rafferty at this point in the presentation?
He will be allowed to speak, you know, as a public speaker during the public comment process.
I'll hold any additional questions till later then.
Thank you. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a process question about the role of the new census data and the timeline for that to come out. Could you help us better understand how census data is used by the demographers? And, and what the effect would be of rushing through a process and then months later having new census data released? And, and how that could, that could potentially bring us back backwards to redo the process that was just done?
Sure. No, it's a good question. So the, as you know, federal decennial census was recently completed earlier this year, and like other, many jurisdictions are awaiting updated census data, which we expect to receive, you know, on or about September 30th, but then there's an adjustment period that needs to take place. And the, the importance of that data is the following. The data is important to make sure that, for example, federal and state requirements are followed, that a nearly equal amount of people, you know, per district is, is achieved, and that demographic information in terms of the background of voters to ensure that federal requirements are followed when it comes to members of protected classifications, meaning that they would have an ability to elect candidates of their choice, you know, while also making sure that, you know, race is not a predominant factor in drawing council districts. So the updated demographic data is very important. And without that updated data, then the city would be looking at, you know, old data and then potentially having to draw maps using old data and then having to redo those maps using updated information. So, and I think, you know, in the demand letter the city received, there was a reference to the upcoming or imminent receipt of updated census data and a suggestion that that could be a reason for an additional 90-day period. So, you know, the, Mr. Rafferty may speak to this when he, when he talks during public comment, but, you know, there is a suggestion in the demand letter that, or at least a recognition that updated census data is forthcoming, and that instead of having to do this twice, it makes sense to do, to draw the district lines, you know, once after that updated information is received.
Thank you. And I think the other question, just, I think, is a matter of making it public for those who haven't read through all the materials, helping everyone understand how a transition like this would happen in terms of being phased over the next two election cycles in 2022 and 2024.
Right. So as indicated in the staff report, I mean, that, what we're looking at potentially now is a situation where you have staggered elections, where you have a few council seats in 2020, November 2022, that would be elected by district, and then the remaining seats in 2020, November 2024, to be elected by district. So you would have at least a two-year period where you would have three members elected by district, and then the remaining two members would still be completing the end of their term for their at-large seats. And then at the end of, after the 2024 election, you would have a full, like, a five-member council elected by districts. There's, there's some assumptions built into that explanation as to the number of council members elected by district, and there's other potential governance structures too, you know, which we can discuss perhaps at a future meeting, and it's alluded to in the staff report. But that is the type of staggering that the staff report contemplates, is three in 2022 and then two in 2024.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Do we have any more questions before we open it up to public comment? Seeing none, I'd like to open up public comment.
Hello. Mr. Mayor, I'm going to start with public comment from Chris Conway.
Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay. From the comments of the city attorney and the city staff and some of the people in the city council, it sounds like the letter coming from Mr. Rafferty on May 24th is a foregone conclusion, as we're already talking about elections, modifiers, censuses. Is anybody in the council interested in telling Mr. Rafferty, see you in court? Mr. Scott Rafferty's threat should be treated as a blind interference into our city's election process, and nothing more than attorney using litigation to extort Sam Mateo in doing what he wants. District elections are divisive, an attack on representative government. When four out of five council members are elected without your ability to vote for them, your government no longer represents you. When today you can vote for all five members of the city council, district elections would limit your vote to just one of the five city council members. That is a decrease in one's voting power of 80%. Doesn't sound very democratic or representative to me. If your candidate cannot win, you better support better candidates. Outside activist attorneys like Scott Rafferty and local racial activists are behind this move for district elections in Sam Mateo. This is their attempt to divide and conquer our great city to their own benefit and interests. I am hopeful that the city council of Sam Mateo will find their backbone tonight and fight this overly litigious attorney in his attempt to update, up, up, upend, excuse me, our great city. Don't cave in. Please fight back. Thank you.
Excuse me. Thank you. The only other hand I have raised is from Mr. Scott Rafferty. I'm allowing to talk.
Well, I don't think I have much time, so I will, first of all, say I'd be happy to answer any questions offline that any of you have or any members of the public. You've very kindly posted my letter. It has my phone number, and I'm glad to talk to anyone. But I hope that you'll embrace a more positive view of this. The way our statute defines racially polarized voting is simply that different minority groups vote differently than the rest of the electorate. And that's not a bad thing. It's, it's actually a good thing. It's important to resident, to representative democracy. I don't believe, and other people are arguing differently to the state Supreme Court, but I don't believe it's an element that the minority always loses. And conversely, in another city across the base, and Ramon, which is now actually majority Indian or South Asian, they, they had never, they had two candidates in their history, and neither of them had won, neither of them had won a single precinct. But they did better in the majority Indian precincts. And now half the town is actually Indian and, or South Asian, I should say. And they have, two of the four council members are South Asian, and there were very serious candidates for mayor who were South Asian. It's transformed their politics in a very positive way. It's made it more representative. And when you move things down to neighborhoods and bring government closer to the people, you also make for richer policy discussions because you enable just a whole new class of candidates, grassroots candidates, who are really close to the people they represent. And there are parts of the, parts of your city may be more environmentalist than other parts. It doesn't lead to divisiveness. I mean, in fact, a professor, oh gosh, I've forgotten her name, wrote a piece in your paper very recently saying that centuries of political theory prove otherwise, and that's true. I mean, this, you know, this is how they set up city councils in colonial America, and it's worked for almost all of our history. And the exception is the last hundred years, and California started this, and it's, it's worked out very badly, actually. It's, it's entrenched a lot of, of local governments, and you're not necessarily the worst case, but you are one of the bigger cities now that, that has a system of government. I'm running out of time. I'd like to talk more at some point with you about the relevance of census data. It's a little more complicated a subject, but I am well disposed to having an extension. Just don't let it drag on too long, and in the future, try to, try to have it earlier in the, earlier in the day, in the evening, and maybe fix the time. So.
I have no other hands raised.
Mr. Mayor, could we ask Mr. Rafferty for clarification on his willingness to give us an extension?
Sure. Yes, I'm very well disposed to it. I have an intuition about some of the demographers you're looking at, and I expect to work very well with them, and they're really first-rate. The issue with extensions is, well, let's talk about the census first. The census data actually has a very limited purpose, which is, it's about size. Everything else you care about, all the demographics, about how well-educated people are, how, what the, what the citizen voting strength age population is, all this comes from a different data set. It comes out every year, not every 10 years, every year. And that one is coming out in December. The school district might be well advised to wait for that data because there's some big changes going on, and some of it is in Foster City, but some of it's in your city. So in terms of the demographics, they're a year old, well, they were released in January. They're coming out a little early this year, and that's, that's not horribly old. The problem with the census is there's a lot of uncertainty because it wasn't a very good census. There was a pandemic. There were some systemic changes in the way we did the census, which are generally bad for minorities in urban areas. So we don't, there could be big changes. We really don't know yet. But you shouldn't do this twice. And I would ask you, focus less on the cost, because, I mean, I'm going to be good value, my $30,000, I can guarantee you. But the real issue here is engaging the public. And when you prolong things, it's harder for the public to sustain interest. So as long as we, you know, keep on, I definitely think we're going to have to go to late in the year to get the census data, probably come out in, in August. And, and, you know, we can work with that. I just want to make sure that you have good public participation. And I'm optimistic that if you choose some of the demographers I think you might consider, that it'll be a very positive experience. Oh, just one final thought, though, about an extension and what you might do with it. Think about having, like, coffee and doughnuts on a Saturday morning, or whatever works for your community, but mix it up a little and maybe do something. and maybe do something a little bit more fun than a council meeting. And get people to talk to each other. I think that can be a very, the cities that have tried that have really learned a lot. So I hope they'll consider that. But, you know, I think this is, I think this will be a positive move. It's not about you. It really isn't. It's a long-term reform. And you just made a big reform, a huge reform in moving into consolidating your elections, which is very beneficial and this kind of completes that, in my opinion. I hope, you know, as we talk a little bit more about it, well, you've read my letter, so I don't want to repeat that, but I hope you take a positive view of it because I think it will help the city. I'm not, I know where four of you live. I don't think it's going to be a disaster in that way. Sometimes it's complicated.
Mayor, I'm sorry. I know I gave it back to Mr. Rafferty.
Yes, okay.
To get clarification, and it sounds like, I like coffee and donuts, so it sounds like Mr. Rafferty is willing to give us the extension, correct?
Yeah, that's the message. I mean, you know, we'll have to negotiate a little, but, yeah. You can, in fact, in fact, we do consider, you know, you can put this off a couple more weeks. You have, even without the governor's, without dealing with the governor's order, you could not start the clock for a couple of weeks, but you're going to get, we're going to find a way to get 90 days at least and get toward the end of the year.
Okay, thank you. Back to council now. Do we have any other questions for staff or or more questions for Mr. Rafferty at this time or comments? And I also, before we begin, I see our IT director's hand up. Pete Owen, I just want to make sure we, something, no more. Okay, so back to council.
Could I ask our city attorney, Rusaya, what, do we need a binding agreement to the extension during this meeting?
So the 90-day extension, it contemplates an agreement with the prospective plaintiff and provides for certain components to be met, for example, as I recall, that the election, I think, take place within, there's a certain time component where I think a decision has to be made at least six months before the election. I have to double check that, but the state law contemplates an agreement to allow for an additional 90-day period. And it's really to allow again for additional time to provide for public outreach and get public input. And yes, it provides for a written agreement that the district boundaries be established no later than six months before the next regular election to select governing board members. Which, you know, it's certainly possible, you know, to do that, I think, given where we are in the calendar.
Okay, do we have more questions? Any more questions, council member Gothols? No? All right, do we have any comments? Who'd like to kick off comments? Don't everybody raise your hand at once, please.
Okay, I'll jump in with comments. So I think we waited for a long time to receive the letter, as it is called. And we were not one of the early organizations to receive the letter. I think that's in part because we have done a good job of being a diverse council that is very representative of our community, and I appreciate that very much. I think that San Mateo, in our current form, we are doing a good job to represent our constituents very well. But the way that this law is written makes it very difficult for us to go up against this lawsuit. And we've talked a lot about how we are in a recession and how we are short on money and something like a lawsuit like this that could cost us potentially millions of dollars, as it did to Santa Clara and some other communities, would cost us jobs and we'd be laying people off. And I think that's not a risk that I am willing to take. As we move into this process of looking at district elections and doing the outreach to our community, I want us to listen very carefully to our constituents and make sure that we are being representative of our community. Our speaker tonight, Chris Conway, mentioned that that under district elections, sometimes you only vote for one of your council members, which is a reduction of four. There are jurisdictions, even in San Mateo County, like San Bruno, where where they have an at-large mayor. And in terms of our representation of our constituents, it could be time for us to consider during this process, how well do we represent our constituents? And is there an opportunity to increase the profile of San Mateo in a way that would bring back dollars that are really important to San Mateo residents, whether it's for great separations or infrastructure? So an at-large mayor may be something that we consider in order to better represent our constituents, which I think is part of the purpose here. And that would also allow every resident in San Mateo to vote for at least two of their council members. I'm just throwing that out there, but I do think that based on the way the law is written, we do need to, at this time, go to our constituents and have that public outreach process and talk about district elections here in San Mateo. And the timeline that has been laid out appears to be the necessary timeline, given the state of the law.
Thank you. Do we have other council members that would like to to speak on this? A council member Lee.
I, I see the way that that this has, well, I've been following how this has been rolled out in our county and across the state, and it is undeniable the risk of litigation and the associated cost. And I personally do not feel comfortable gambling with our jobs and services for this community. And I think it would be a fool's errand. I do believe that the strength of our democracy and governance really does benefit from diversity. And when I, when I think about diversity, I look at this council and I see a diversity of skill and profession and lived experience. And I think that our council has done a stellar job and is, has done a good job representing all of our community members. I, I support adopting the resolution. I look forward to us driving forward a very strategic, inclusive and robust community outreach process. I also would be interested in, you know, the possibility of formalizing some sort of ad hoc committee with, that has been formed in other cities and jurisdictions that has helped drive some of the participation across multiple stakeholder groups in a way that was somewhat de-politicized. And so there were strict criteria in the eligibility requirements to serve on those kind of committees. And so I think that that is a potential community engagement structure that we could consider and would look forward to the opportunity to explore that.
Thank you. Who would like to go next? Okay, I will go next. You know, when we're, when we're talking about this matter potentially costing us millions of dollars, that is even if we successfully challenge the claims. And to me, that's, that's a big deal. At this point, I feel that the prudent course of action is to move forward with passing this resolution of intention. It's the least risky option we have at this point, and it will give us a chance to have a robust community discussion. The topic of how we best elect council members comes up more and more often. And I think now is the goodest time as ever to have this conversation. That being said, I do share the concerns that we've talked about during the presentation that if we are somehow forced to draw up districts without enough time to incorporate the new census data, that would just be a needless waste of staff time and public resources, which I would like to not see happen at all costs. But that's pretty much where I stand on this right now. So now either one of you have to go.
Shall I go, Rick? Deputy Mayor Bonilla?
Go ahead.
Yeah, so I think we should be clear that this is a business decision that the city is really making. And and part of our job is to be fiscal stewards. And so we made some decisions earlier tonight, or we referenced some some budgetary constraints that we're operating under. And I think that this decision has to be made to adopt a resolution because of how difficult it would be to fight something like this, how expensive it would be. So that said, I'd like to comment a little bit about the process. And I would concur with the comments that have already been made, is that we should all seek and really embrace the public's input on these important issues about districts, member them, how they should be drawn, all that good stuff. I think it really is the most important thing that we do at this moment in time is to methodically engage in very full, transparent process with robust public input from our residents. I think that's the most effective way to draw district lines and convert over to district elections. I am intrigued about the additional time that Mr. Rafferty had spoken about because I do only want to do it once. And I really am anxious about the census data and/or the demographic data that he referred to. I, I think this process has to be so thorough. So I would really appreciate that time to be able to get this done correctly and for the best way that our residents will be represented. So I look forward to the process and I'm all about coffee and donuts, trust me, like, I'm good, you know, however we can reach people, let's do it. Let's hear from them and let's make it the best process that we possibly can. So that's where I'm coming from. And I wait with bated breath to hear Deputy Mayor Bonilla.
Thank you, now you will. First, I want to say that in this change from the way we have voted basically from the beginning of this country's existence, at this point, is like many other changes, going to be hard for some people to accept. Going to want to argue with the reasoning and go back into history for lengthy discussions. I appreciate all that, but I really, I concur with, I think, all of the comments I heard my fellow council members make. Especially the part that Councilmember Pappin made about, we need to be good fiscal stewards. And I like the fact that she referred to our talks tonight about the budget. Thank you, Diane, because that is a tough process. We have people, everybody who was on the meeting heard our employees commenting that they're having a very tough time, right? The money that we could lose, okay, challenging this, this change could be the money that we end up, you know, needing for some other purpose. And by the way, I happen to feel like our employees really deserve, especially those that spoke who are the lowest paid amongst our employees, they deserve some help. So I'm not interested in losing more money fighting something that it's really clear that chances of us prevailing are not good. So not interested in hoping for a miracle. I'm happy to hear it's being challenged that Santa Monica's got it at the state Supreme Court. I think that's a good thing and more power to them. I also am very intent on pressing Mr. Rafferty for the extension that was discussed earlier. We will need that because we do need to work with the very newest census data that we can possibly get. And I appreciated some of Mr. Rafferty's comments. But, you know, while you're a city council and you're having change forced on you, it's hard to see this as a great change going on as I think Mr. Conway testified to. So that said, I support the resolution to move forward and start the process. I look forward, though, I'm hoping, to a very robust process with our members of the public who I feel fairly certain that a certain group will come out to, you know, express their deep concerns and other ones might not so much. And that's what I want to avoid. I need everybody to come to the table for this very, probably the most important discussion we're going to have in a number of years. So I'll be there and I want everybody else to be there, too, so we can make this decision together in a way that's more meaning for everybody, more meaningful for everybody because this is what the city of San Mateo will come to consensus on, how to do it. And then look, you know, forward to a bright future under the new way of doing our elections. So, thank you. Those are my comments.
Does he have the motion?
I would make a motion to approve the resolution.
If I can jump in, Mr. Mayor, there are two resolutions. If somebody wanted to make a motion for the staff recommendation, that would be fine as well.
Yes, I make a motion for the staff recommendation. Thank you very much, Mr. City Attorney.
Okay, I heard Deputy Mayor Bonilla make the motion and Councilmember Lee second. So Deputy Mayor Bonilla?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Gothols?
Yes.
Councilmember Pappin?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Okay, that was, that was both, that was both the motions together, correct? Okay. All right, we're going to close that item and move on to the next item, which is item number 26, Property Maintenance Code Amendment Ordinance Introduction. And we have Christine from Code Enforcement here to present to us.
Hi.
Unless we want to continue it another time.
No.
Just want to make sure you're there, Christine.
Well, okay, if you insist. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. I'm Christine Civiletti and I am the Code Enforcement Manager. I do not have a presentation for you tonight. I think we should keep this simple. I'm here to introduce a proposal, proposed amendment to the San Mateo Municipal Code, Chapter 7.14, Property Maintenance Ordinance. Adopt the 2021 edition of the International Property Maintenance Code. The 2015 edition is the current version. The 2015 edition is the current version adopted by the city. Just briefly, the three proposed changes are revising San Mateo Municipal Code, Chapter 7.14, to align the numbering and format with the 2021 IPMC. Redefine the definition of temporary to 180 days to align with the IPMC and the California Building Code. And then finally, and most importantly, the amendment that is important to Code Enforcement is to add a subsection to 7.14.040, general requirements, which amends the IPMC pest elimination. And this amendment would require property owners of multiple occupancy buildings to provide a report and remediation plan from a licensed pest control professional. Staff believes that this approach is effective and ensures that the subject matter experts will be employed to address these critical public health matters and places the expense and remediation burden on the responsible property owners. And that's all I have to talk to you about, if you have questions for me, based on the AR and the information that was provided.
Thank you, Christine. I'll bring it back to council for any questions for Christine. Not seeing any questions, so I'd like to open a public comment for this item.
I have no hands raised.
I'd like to close public comment, bring it back to council for any questions or any comments, anything at all.
Make a motion to approve the staff recommendation.
I'll second it. I like the idea of a certified pest control playing a role.
Great. Madam Clerk, can you please call well?
Deputy Mayor Bonilla?
Yes.
Councilmember Pappin?
Yes.
Councilmember Gauthos?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. And I just want to remind you that we did pull one item off a consent that we still have before us.
Right. Item number 19, COVID-19 update.
Thank you, Christine.
You're welcome.
Okay, and is this Drew going to be presenting?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Rodriguez, members of the city council. I just have a very brief update for tonight. Next slide, please. So operationally, our two-hour parking enforcement, we basically have three kind of subsets of two-hour parking enforcement. We have our residential parking permit zones, and those zones have been enforced, for the most part, throughout the pandemic. We did pause it very early, along with a number of other parking enforcement, but we did resume that fairly soon after the pandemic began. And then the other two areas are, you have your commercial areas, and then you have Bay Meadows. You know, the commercial areas in Bay Meadows, the two-hour parking enforcement was paused during the pandemic, and it has remained on pause. It's done to accommodate more people being at home and just generally activity being a lot slower. With that said, as things are opening up, we're really seeing an increased need to enforce in the commercial areas. We're starting to see problems with inventory and turnover and folks really parking for long periods of time in our commercial areas, and it's having an impact on some of the businesses. We're not seeing these issues in Bay Meadows at this point. We're not seeing inventory or turnover issues in Bay Meadows. So what we're recommending from staff is that we resume two-hour parking enforcement in our commercial areas, starting about three weeks from now on July the 12th, but that we continue to not enforce in Bay Meadows for the time being until we start to see more of a need there. Next slide, please. And that's really it for my update. I would have two items for confirmation. The first one is a confirmation of the continued need for local emergency proclamation. These extensions are required every day, every 60 days, and our current extension is good through the end of this month. I am asking for another 60-day extension to provide flexibility as we return normal operations over the next several months. I do expect this will be the final extension, and that we'll be able to end the local emergency as we move into the end of the summer. Also requesting confirmation of the resumption of the two-hour parking enforcement in our commercial areas, starting on July 12th, and following a period of intense outreach to make sure people are aware that we would be resuming that enforcement. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Drew. And just for clarification, like last time, Prasanna, we do not need to take a vote to confirm these, we can just affirm them with the majority saying yes?
I think in this instance, taking a motion, I think is appropriate, it's fine. I think the wording was changed just a little bit, so I think it's appropriate to make a motion to confirm the items as requested.
Great, thank you. Does any council member have any questions? Drew? Okay, I'd like to open up public comment.
We have no hands raised.
I'll close public comment, bring it back to council for any other comments or motions.
I'll move to continue the 60 days and to, that's all you needed the motion on, was just the first part, right?
Just to confirm that he should continue with the 60 or the emergency moratorium actions, yes.
We got a second?
Yes, second.
What?
Can I, Mr. Mayor, can I just confirm the motion?
Yes, sure.
So I think the motion was sort of twofold. One was to confirm, I think, the acceptability of resuming the parking enforcement in a few weeks in the specified areas, and then also confirming the extension for an additional 60-day period of the emergency proclamation.
So moved, and we got a second? Okay.
Second.
Councilmember Pappin?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bonilla?
Yes.
Councilmember Gauthos?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Okay, so we'd like to move on to reports and announcements.
Mr. Mayor, could I, I have been completely remiss. I overlooked the fact that during our consent agenda, we appointed a new planning commissioner.
That is correct.
And she is present, and I would love to swear her in if she would like to be sworn in right now. And please accept my apology for not bringing this up sooner in the meeting, earlier in our meeting.
Is she with us?
Oh, she was, but now she's not.
Hello.
There you are.
Okay, I guess our city clerk, are you ready to initiate the oath of office?
Yes, I will. Seema, I think you remember the protocol?
Yes.
So you raise your right hand and fill in your name after the "I" and repeat after me. I?
I, Seema Patel.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend?
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully?
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Right, congratulations, Seema.
Congratulations.
All right, so now, now reports and announcements. Looks like Councilmember Pappin has to report and/or announce.
Yeah, so I just wanted to announce that I had the privilege of going to the Aboratorium Society today. Aboratorium, I hope I said that right. And if you see Councilmember Gauthos and Councilmember Lee, their background is the picture of the pump house in Central Park, which they have newly renovated, and it's absolutely beautiful. So, and it is available to have city staff events and that sort of thing. So I strongly encourage you to get a chance, if you get a chance, to go look at it. And part and parcel of their event today is that they raised money, and they donated $10,000 to the city of San Mateo to work on the two Laurel Avenue entrances into Central Park. So much kudos to this wonderful society, and they grow plants there, and it was really, really cool to see. It's a great group of volunteers that worked there a lot through COVID, actually, because it was a way for people to get out. So what a cool amenity for the city of San Mateo. So if you get the chance to get over there, I strongly recommend it. And thank you to them for their gracious donation.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Bonilla?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to refer back to, you know, I mentioned in my comments about during the talk about the CBRA issue, that I'm concerned about the fact that those millions of dollars that we might pay if we were to challenge this change could be used to help some of our employees who are having a tough time making it. So that brings me back to a discussion that we had. I did vote yes to approve the budget during that item, but I'm still troubled. We need a budget, by the way, in place by a certain time. So I'm still troubled, though, and I think, I want to mention that I am intent on, and I'm going to work on, and any other council member that feels similarly might want to think about this. We do have the one-time $19 million coming from the federal government. I know that at least one, maybe two, of the speakers from SEIU Local 521 mentioned hazard pay. Hazard pay is a one-time thing that can be done, as a lump sum one-time thing, not like ongoing pay raises or anything else, or COLA even. I think we should consider looking at and have a discussion about whether we can do that.
Okay, so how does this work, Prasanna? I know that it's not on the agenda, so I know we can't discuss it. So are we, are you, are you looking for any?
I'm asking if we can put it on the agenda for discussion?
Got it.
But is it the kind of thing that we would put on the agenda, or is this part of labor negotiation? That's my question. I'm happy to take it up, but I just don't know what the forum is.
Would it be requesting another closed session?
I think it would be requesting potentially another closed session on that item.
I would be in favor of looking at the budget impact of hazard pay.
I would, too. So let's go to closed session, and we can talk about it.
Good, thanks.
At some point, not tonight.
Next week.
God love you, everyone.
Thank you, thank you.
It would need to be within the context of the existing Brown Act limitations on labor negotiations.
Any other reports and announcements by other council members? Okay, see, none. I'm going to hand things over to Councilmember Gauthos before we adjourn.
Thank you, everyone. We lost one of my oldest and dearest friends, Larry Del Santo. Larry Del Santo was born January 12, 1934, and passed away just June 11 of this year. He happens to be the brother of one of my oldest and dearest friends, Mary Lou Harris, who I grew up down the street from on Aragon Boulevard. Larry Del Santo, beloved husband, father, grandfather, and great-grandfather, died at the age of 87. He came to San Mateo in the 1930s. He went to Sarah High School and USF. He served his country honorably, first in ROTC, and then served abroad in Germany as an officer in the Army. He had 12 children, 12 amazing children, who I have the privilege of knowing. In his career, he worked for Vons and for Lucky, and actually rose to great prominence as both the president and CEO of those organizations. He served on the boards of many companies, including as a trustee of the University of San Francisco. He had a long history with the Jesuits and a long history with higher education. He, in fact, served as a director of the Los Angeles Area Chamber of Commerce. We still dearly miss his wife, Becky. We also miss his son, Larry, who passed away in 2016. But he leaves behind 37 grandchildren and 11 of his 12 children, and his great-grandchild. His life was defined by faith, by family, and by education. He will be missed by the many who loved him and all of us who are trying to follow his example, so I appreciate the time tonight, and if we could just have a moment of silence in his honor. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Gauthos. This meeting is adjourned. Be safe, everyone.
Good night, everybody.